We're live.
We are live.
All right, good evening, welcome to the April 26 Nottingham Planning Board. We'll start by doing introductions, we'll start with Buzz.
Laura Davies, alternate.
Grace Tabaskam.
John Warren.
Ian McKinnon.
Sherry Samler.
Shawnee Anderson.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
All right, so tonight we only have one public hearing on the docket, so we'll take everything in order, so we might as well jump right in. So this is case number 23-004, SUB Residence at Fort Hill on Smoke Street and Fort Hill Road. Application from Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Owl Ridge Builders requesting a 25 lot open space subdivision. The property is located at Smoke Street and Fort Hill Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 23 Lot 11. Two conditional use permits have been applied for. Article 3, Section B, Item Number 6 permits to request disturbance within the 25 feet of a wetland. And Article 4, Section S 8.2 to permit requests for lots that have a larger than maximum area. Allow frontage less than prescribed and allow reduction to the landscape buffer. And before we get started, we will seat Mr. Davies for Ms. Mooney. And then we'll sit Sandra for Mr. Veal, he will not be here this evening. All right, Mr. Berry?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry, I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering representing the applicant here this evening, Owl Ridge Builders and the landowner Frederick Fernald. Earlier last year, we conducted two design review hearings with the planning board to determine really the best way to develop the property. The applicant has chosen to do an open space subdivision as part of the project design. And tonight, Ian, I'm not sure how you want me to proceed, I can give a short presentation, I can give you a really long presentation if you'd like.
Yeah.
I can go through the application in detail, however you'd like me to proceed, I'm happy to.
I think to start, just because we obviously have quite a crowd here, and I know people have kind of read the documents, I guess just try and give an overview of, obviously you've created a yield plan, just keep it basic to where you've ended up, how many lots. We'll dive into details, we'll kind of dive in probably more once we get through acceptance and everything.
Okay, all right. So as I pointed out, we had a design review hearing with the planning board, the first design review provided a yield plan that had either 26 or 27 lots on it, and then had a, an open space subdivision design that had three cul-de-sacs. Two on Smoke Street, which were still proposing, and one off of Fort Hill Road. What came out of the first meeting was the planning board asked with consult with the abutting landowners if we would consider modification to the design in two ways. First, removing lots from the yield plan, or just ensuring that the yield plan met the requirements, and provide additional detail that the, the lots in the yield plan did meet requirements. And then second, if we would consider removing the proposed roadway from the Fort Hill entrance from a property, and in so doing would reduce quite dramatically the impact on Fort Hill Road and the residents on Fort Hill Road. And so we had a second design review meeting with the planning board. At the time, the planning board reviewed the yield plan, felt that in general it met the rules, we knew we had additional detail to provide. And the plan provided for a layout very similar to what we've presented in a plan package to you this evening, where we have a proposed road that we're calling Peekaboo Drive off from Smoke Street, which is on the northern section of the property. A proposed cul-de-sac that we're calling Frederick Lane, which is on the southern portion of the property. And then two oversized lots on the Fort Hill Road access point. And so that was, that was laid out as a 25 lot subdivision in both the yield plan and the open space subdivision design. And then we essentially took the input from the planning board at that time, and we've since been designing the project around that input and your rules and regulations. So just to point out a few characteristics of the open space subdivision, we have 102 acres of land approximately. We abut the Little River at the back of the site, we abut Smoke Street, and we abut Fort Hill Road. We have a large, as I've presented in my written narratives, we have a larger wetland system that traverses through the center of the property here. We have wetlands that are along Little River at the back of the site. And then there are some other interceding wetlands that come down to a large marsh here to the southern portion of the property. We're also located within the aquifer protection zone, which has ramifications on minimum lot sizes in a conventional subdivision, and has ramifications on coverage types that are found on those lots in a conventional subdivision. As part of the open space subdivision, we're not proposing any impact to, direct impact to wetlands, wetlands themselves. We are proposing some minor impacts within 25 feet of the wetlands. And I've come to find that that requires a conditional use permit to be considered by the board, the Conservation Commission, as part of these proceedings. But we're proposing to not develop any roadway systems, and much of the development is outside of the aquifer protection zone. There are only two lots that are located within the aquifer protection zone. There are, there are two lots in the Peekaboo portion of the subdivision that has the corner of the lot inside the zone, but the proposed development is not located in the aquifer protection zone. As the chair read into the record, we do have a number of roadway waivers that we're asking for, none of which change the true geometry of the roadway. They're all pretty basic waiver requests. In addition to the 25 foot buffer conditional use permit application that we have filed, we are asking for conditional use permits as part of our open space subdivision design. And I'll just quickly go through those. So, two of these are really, in how you read and interpret the open space subdivision regulations, you're required to have a 100 foot buffer, and it's a 100 foot landscape buffer. So what we've done in the project design is to ensure that there's ample room and area between the Peekaboo subdivision to the north and the existing Little River homes in the subdivision to the north, we've kept the boundary lines back 100 feet. So ordinarily, we wouldn't have to do that, we could show the boundary lines all the way to the perimeter boundary, and then just show a 100 foot landscape buffer on the lots. But I think it's important that if we have the room and it's available, that that 100 foot buffer be held back. That same landscape buffer, the way it reads, if you read it one way, it may imply... Miss Tabaskam, is there something that you need?
I didn't get the small packet with the page you're on. Sorry?
Let's see, maybe I'll take mine, I think I have a PDF of it.
No, no, those things, I didn't get that packet, no? I got the, I got the 79 page one, I didn't get the other smaller packet.
Do you want to take, I have it on PDF, you can just use mine, I have mine on Mac.
All right, thank you. I didn't have it either, so.
You can continue, sir.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, it's just hard to follow you when I can't see what you're looking at.
So depending on how you read that landscape buffer, it, the way it reads, it says from abutting land uses. We've interpreted that to mean, in the strictest sense, abutting lots, or abutting land owners. But if you consider the word land uses, we are well beyond 100 feet from any abutting land use with the proposed impact areas. So the entrance to the proposed Frederick subdivision has a gravel wetland that's designed at the entrance to it, and that's within the 100 foot frontage landscaped area. We are proposing one around that area to mitigate its, how it looks from Smoke Street. There's an existing utility easement that runs along the southerly boundary line. Our proposed roadway sort of navigates a wetland buffer through there and navigates around the utility easement. And one, in one instance, is located within 100 feet of the boundary line there. And so I think the planning board discussed...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
At the very beginning, you mentioned the 25 feet, 25 foot buffer, what was that in reference to?
That is the wetland buffer here at the entrance to Peekaboo.
Okay, the entrance to Peekaboo.
It's the new article that the town voted in for wetland buffers this year.
And I'll, I'll talk about that in detail in just a couple of minutes. And then we're proposing a rain garden here at the rear of Frederick. We're not proposing any road improvements to be within 100 feet of the boundary line, but we are proposing a rain garden there that is within 100 feet of the, the boundary line. Again, that's not a structural item, so it's unclear to me whether or not we really need a CUP for that. But I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and ask for it, and be told that we don't need it, then be caught needing it and not requesting it. Additionally, as I was writing my conditional use permit request, I did note that though we're not proposing any building on Frederick, on Fort Hill Road, within 100 feet of a perimeter boundary line, we are proposing a driveway into the neck of that area. And again, depending on how the board views that landscape buffer, that may also need a conditional use permit for the open space development. Additionally, the lot, there are a couple lots in the subdivision that are oversized, so these two lots on Fort Hill Road are intentionally oversized to fit a little bit better with the neighborhood design in that area. That was previously discussed at the design review and thought to be generally acceptable. And then there are two lots off the end of Frederick that are oversized also. Those are oversized because of their odd shape. So if you can imagine requiring a 20,000 square foot lot, but really 20,000 square feet, it is not, only half of it's buildable just based on its shape, it's not really, it's not really a great building lot in that instance. And so what we've done there is asked for a conditional use permit. The alternative to that would be to extend the roadway out, square the lots off, and we then would not require that conditional use permit. But I think in this particular case, we've created some rather nice secluded lots, and have done it pretty creatively around the topography that's there while reducing the amount of infrastructure for the proposed subdivision. The Peekaboo entrance, as she's pointed out, requires a conditional use permit to be within 25 feet, disturbance within 25 feet of the wetland. Again, we have no direct wetland impact there, and what we tried to do was center the proposed roadway between the two wetlands, and ensure that the impact within that area was really strictly due to stormwater features. So the proposed roadway is outside the 25 foot setback to, or buffer to wetlands. It's really, as I pointed out in my narrative, it's really a treatment swale that treats stormwater at the entrance to the proposed project that requires the disturbance within that 25 foot buffer. So we're not asking relief to generate building areas, or building lots, or even proposed roadways. It's simply to allow us to treat the stormwater prior to discharging to the wetlands. We do have some very poorly drained soils on site. Those are noted throughout the plan set, and their required 75 foot setback is adhered to on the project design. We have a number of consultants working with us on the project, so we have John Hayes, who's a wetland scientist and a soil scientist. He prepared the wetlands analysis and flagging on site for us. He also field delineated the very poorly drained soils. He's also prepared a site-specific soils map. He has prepared a vernal pool analysis, which we'll submit to you for the next hearing. I make reference to it in my narratives. We have, because we're required to have an alteration of terrain permit, and we've received some what we call hits from the Natural Heritage Bureau, we seem to have every turtle under the sun sort of living in this particular area. So we've hired Fragile Rock Environmental to do a wildlife analysis for us, which is required by alteration of terrain. And when that's ready to be submitted to the board, we're happy to do that along with our alteration of terrain permit. We've also hired, and as of today, received a report back from our archaeology team, who has cleared the site of any archaeological sensitive areas within our proposed development. We had since, we had prior reached out to the Historical Society to determine where on site a particular graveyard might be. We did receive some information from them about that. We've gone out and field located where that cemetery is on site. We ensured that our project is well away from that. And we made note to that to Manadnuck Archaeological, and they have submitted, they've done some additional field work on site, and they've submitted a report to us clearing the project of any sensitive areas. And so we'll now submit that to the Division of Historical Resources so that they can open a file and do what's known as an RPR for us to determine whether or not an additional study is needed, or if one submitted is, is adequate. So that's the, those are the basics of the proposed project, Mr. Chair, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you and the butters have.
Thank you, yeah, no, that's, I think that's what we're looking for. I think the next step is, Blair, if you had any comments in terms of acceptance? I'd obviously looked through, it was a lot to review, but in terms of...
Especially for only three days.
Yeah, they are asking for six waivers. I did outline those in my staff report, and I made comments, pretty much all of them, it looks like I at least said something to respect. With seeking further opinion, I even asked a few questions. Obviously, I don't take particular issue with any of them, except that they should, you know, the applicant might want to address some of the questions that I have, to clarify. We do need to seek some input from certain department heads. I will make one note, I think the north arrow on this one, on the colored...
Yes.
Colored colors are...
That's wrong.
Okay. I used, I used those for my review, so there's a note in here about referencing two curb cuts on Smoke Street, so please be mindful of that, my references are wrong. I can go, you know, I could talk about the project in a little more detail with regards to the comments, you know, anticipate we're going to be having back and forths on, on content information, different department heads chiming in, so it's not a full review, it's what we have in front of us and to get us started. But in short, you know, as far as completeness goes, if the board is comfortable with the waivers, or if, you know, I think the board can accept the proposal, the application as being complete, you know, pending waivers.
Do we need to see the cemetery on here, like we just have to see the people numbers?
I can address that if you'd like. So cemetery is shown on all of the existing conditions plans? It's not going to be on that one, it's going to be in the thicker packet?
On the thicker packet.
The thicker packet.
All right.
So on sheet 10 of the plan set?
Okay.
It's a really good view of where that is. It's shown on all the applicable pages, but that's a really good view of where that is.
What number page is that?
Sheet 10, sheet 10 of 79.
Where on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is?
So it's...
Oh, I see this cross.
Yep, so it's at the, it's at the front of the site against...
By Smoke Street.
Yep, by Smoke Street. There's an existing trail system there, and it's right off the trail system in that area.
It's right up from the word spoke.
Does, any, any of the board members have comments regarding completeness in the application?
I, I, I have a comment, and that we've only had three days to look at this packet.
Sure.
So we're having to take his word for it, and I guess Brett Ranthager, a planner, but I don't feel comfortable saying this is complete when I haven't really had a chance to look at it fully. I only got some of the pages tonight. I take issue with that. I, I don't know what happened, but a year ago, we used to get stuff a week ahead of time to be able to look at it, and then even possibly look at the site. And now we got three days for a 25 lot subdivision that has...
Yeah, I can...
It, this is, we are all not paid to do this, we are all volunteers, we have other things to do, I just find this too much.
I can tell you that from a submissions perspective, it's been at the town hall, I think it's more of just a, I think in the past, we've kind of transitioned to more electronic, this might be the first one we've mailed out recently.
And I didn't mail them.
Yeah, so it was a, it was more so a mail delay issue, yeah.
I received mine on Thursday, I think, and...
Right.
Yeah, I know, failed my attention.
Did you, yours on...
Yeah, I got mine on, mine was Wednesday, Thursday of last week. So I guess...
Mine wasn't ready until Monday for pickup.
Mine, yours was ready Friday to be picked up.
Then how did she get it on Thursday, when it was mailed?
Because I mailed it to them, you didn't want yours mailed.
But I said I would come and pick it up when it was ready, and you had said...
It was ready Friday.
Okay.
Ms. Meister, the question that I have on completeness, I mean certainly, there's, there's a lot of information, but my, my question on completeness is kind of the new requirements coming out of the state, as far as when we consider it, do we need all those studies? There's a lot of studies that are forthcoming, so we could still accept it as complete, knowing that those studies are forthcoming.
I think Ms. Mooney would have had a problem with this whole turtle thing.
Well, so I guess, and I think what you're referring to is, is the mention to the wildlife study, I mean, that's the simplest term, people call it the wildlife study.
Yeah, and she's the head of that.
What I will say to that is that that was a product of, you have to submit an application to the state, it had to trigger, so it's kind of, you don't even know if you actually need to get to that point until you make an initial submission. So they had to get all this together, submit it to the state, and then the state says, well, we want you to look into this extra piece. It's a fairly new process in the last couple of years with the state, so...
She wasn't happy with passing it this quickly.
Passing it, we're accepting the application as complete, meaning we have all the information to start to review it, is what we'd be looking at, not that we're going to approve it, it's that we have all the information that we need to start the discussion with the applicant on.
Right. So there's a lot, obviously a lot of material, this is not a one meeting, I hope you're not expecting to get a vote tonight.
This isn't my first.
There's a lot of material, it's going to take time. One thing that we will discuss is that we did get some feedback from CMA, obviously with a project of this size, we look for feedback to take some of that technical review component, read some of the analysis that the applicant has submitted. It is a lot of information for us as a board to review, so there certainly will be that. But we're not expected to have digested every single piece, and that's why we do use the peer review engineer. But the goal of the acceptance here tonight is, I would feel if it's enough information to begin that discussion, we certainly will have requests for more information, the applicant's already said that there's some things that are forthcoming based on recent correspondence with the state.
But we start the clock, though, when we accept it. We start the clock on how long we have to prove it.
That's kind of where my questions are, when we start the clock, but if, in, in the clock starts ticking, as long as the applicant is willing to work with the board, which they have been, given their past performance coming to, to design reviews, so I'm comfortable that the applicant will work with us, so as long as we can, if they agree on the continuations of the case, then we would be fine in accepting the application as complete, knowing that there's, you know, I mean, this is pretty thorough in what they have presented to us already, with what studies are coming. Certainly, there's a lot more that we will want to do, like go do a site walk and...
Right, and get the fire chief out there.
Have the reviews, get the input, yes, get SRPCs more and things like that, so that's the question.
Right, and that's where, you know, again, to go back to this wildlife study, that's one of those items, it's not specific, that specific type of study is not required by our ordinance or regulations. It's certainly provided to us as a supplement, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission will love to get their hands on it. And we will, if anything, it's additional information to, for them to review, because they will have to review the project as part of the conditional use permits.
Are there any special walls on this property? Are they right along the border?
If you look, they're, they're pretty much right along.
So I guess, I guess I'll give my input, I mean, I, I've made my best effort to review as many documents as can, at least scanning them. I didn't check for spelling errors, I didn't get that detailed with it. So I deem, I, my thought is that it's complete enough for us to discuss further, right? Because that's the first step legally, is we have to, we can't really discuss it any further unless we deem it complete, or even request more information. We can request more information, but we get into why we're requesting more information. And then that's that back and forth, again, it's on the clock. And yes, based on past performance, it's in everybody's best interest to provide the adequate amount of time to, to review and approve. So again, the goal here is, if the board feels that, you know, it's a large amount of information, if it's enough to deem complete, we can continue talking about the project tonight. There's obviously another piece after this that we'll have to discuss anyway, about, that'll determine how the meeting goes forward anyway, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
Make a motion that case, application case 23-004, Sub, Residence at Fort Hill, application is complete.
And I would second that.
We have a first by Ms. Anderson, and a second by Ms. Jones.
No, Tabaskam, oh, you're okay.
Yep. All those in favor of finding the application complete, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Not complete?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I'm abstaining as well.
Okay. It passes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's the first item.
Regional impact?
Second, anybody want to, we'll first have some discussion regarding development of regional impact. Anybody have initial thoughts?
I mean, this doesn't abut any of the other towns, there's the traffic impact, there's, has been submitted a traffic impact study already, so it does not, to me, look like it's a regional impact.
Okay. Anybody else have thoughts? I do, but I'll leave. I agree, I, I thought about this a lot, I mean, it's basically, if you think about people accessing this development, they're two, they're, they're, I'm sure percentage-wise, they're most likely to try and get to Route 4 in some way, and that takes them through the town of Lee, but it's a fraction of a mile. And those are already well-traveled roads, if we're all aware right now, or back interior to Nottingham. So I did review the numbers, the traffic analysis will certainly be something that CMA will include in their peer review and provide some general comment on, so, and again, the proximity to Lee, I also did not feel that it was a development of regional impact.
I make a motion. I make a motion that case 23-004, Sub, Residence at Fort Hill, is not a regional impact.
I'd second that.
All right, the first by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Jones again. All those in favor that this is not a development of regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Ian Hayes, per sents? It also passes. All right, so now we can continue talking about it tonight. Was there anything else, Mr. Berry, that you wanted to add, or do you just want us to kind of dive in? I don't know if there's anything else you thought you might, might want to comment on, or if not, we'll jump probably right back to the board and try and keep it as concise tonight and clear, but...
Yeah, unless you want us to do a deep, deep dive into it tonight, I'm happy to field questions that you might have, and then we'd love to hear from the neobutters.
Sure.
That we can hopefully schedule a site walk if the board feels that that's appropriate, and start providing the information.
So again, tonight, this is not going to be the only meeting. I think the goal here is, I obviously want everybody to get their comments out. I treat this, this first meeting, I think is prudent to treat as a fact-finding mission. If any board members have questions, which will warrant some more information, or maybe the applicant thinking about coming back to us with more information, to get that information out tonight. Again, we'll have some comments from CMA, I know we do have some comment from the, some town departments. I might just mention those here first, just to get those out of the way. And then what I might do is have it, bring it back to Blair for... And then what I might do is have it, bring it back to Blair for number two on his staff comments, so we'll get those out of the way, and then we'll just kind of go through the board as possible, and then we'll get to the public comment as soon as possible as we can. So again, uh, like I mentioned, we did receive some comments from, uh, Director of Public Works and the Police Chief. Um, and I'll just read those out so everybody here, um, can see what they said. So this one is first from the Director of Public Works, uh, emailed dated April sixth. Just some bullet points. Will this be a town road when complete? Will there be any impact fees to Public Works? If so, HOA is needed. The HOA is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the drainage system. I questioned the added runoff, runoff water that will impact the pond next to Fort Hill Road. Did the hydraulic study pick that up and the culvert that crosses Fort Hill Road from that pond? And an inventory of any invasive plants on the site needs to be completed. If so, they need to be destroyed so they don't spread. Couple of these are more at the board level. Impact fees is certainly actually a separate item from this case to discuss. I'll assume the town road component is it's being designed to a town standard, but there's no immediate obligation for a town to accept a roadway. There's a process that every road has to go through.
I thought we didn't have a town standard.
For acceptance of existing roads becoming, not new roads.
Yeah, a plan like this, all these new roads meet all the standards, the, what you're referring to is referred to a road that was pre-built, pre-done before, and whether, how that became.
Predates the regulations.
Predates our regulations where every road here has to have their twenty-five feet, their curb cut, their. That's, uh, this supersedes anything that the.
So certainly, the subdivision, I think it's section fifteen point six plus minus four, fifty-four, is, uh, dives into a lot of detail on requirements for pavement, road width, um, so. It's quite a bit to follow in that this, this does.
But all new roads, when, when and if they become town, they become part of the town, meet the town standards.
That's the idea, is, there's always a desire, not, not many people are gonna go through the effort of the money to spend, uh, to build a road to that standard. It's built with the intent that it could become a town road, and then the town then knows, okay, it was built to a standard that we established, so. That's, it's gotta be built, there's a whole process to go through. That's not a one-year thing.
It's not a guarantee that it will be, because it gets to be, it needs to be accepted by the town at a town vote.
Correct. Uh, like any road, whether it's an existing road or a proposed road, at some point, it has to be voted on by the town, uh, the top voters.
It's the same process we've been doing for.
Right, it hasn't changed only since the ordinance, the ordinance was written. Um, HOA, I know you had some comments, there is, I, I imagine there's already a draft in place or in the works, so I'm sure we'll hear more about the HOA.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, uh, just like the last larger subdivision that we completed, uh, the HOA would be responsible for those stormwater systems, um, explicitly called out, uh, for that purpose, so that the DPW is not responsible for those.
Yep, and that will, and again, like, uh, like every development that has an HOA, that will be reviewed by town council, usually subsequent to approval or towards the end, if we all feel we're getting close. Um, obviously, you've received recent feedback, so you've probably incorporated.
Sooner than the last.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's the prerogative, if they want to start that sooner with town council, they can.
Is, uh, is fire department or anyone requiring buildings, uh, structures to be sprinkled or no, or?
We have not received any feed, we have not received any feedback from the fire department right now. There's obviously some personnel changes that have gone on, so we're trying to, we will need comment from somebody representing the fire department on this project, um, so we're gonna be chasing that down.
But we don't have it yet.
We do not have it yet. The timing of this application, um, we did not receive comment.
Right.
Is sister on Smoke Street?
Existing or proposed?
Existing.
Uh, no, I think, I was thinking about this, I think there might be a dry hydrant down the road.
Down by the river. Yeah.
But we're proposing a sister.
But they are proposing actually a sister out here on the road. Yeah. Um, let's see, uh, the question about runoff, did you receive a copy of the Public Works comments and police? So we'll get those from Alana, and the one on runoff, I'll let you kind of review that and provide response in the response letter. Same thing with invasive plants, that can even incorporate into what you guys are working on right now with, with the site. So I just want, I wanted to read those and address some of those. Obviously, um, the applicant will most likely respond to these in a response letter, so we'll kind of get that on the record. Second one, we did receive comment from, uh, Chief Woodman from the Police Department. Her only comment was, I would recommend that this development has two ways of entering and leaving, essentially, and, and, uh, not a dead end of road. So that was her only comment there.
Did, um, did the chief receive the traffic impact, um, analysis? I, I would recommend that we send that to, uh, the chief as well.
Can we just make sure she gets a link to, yeah, can we get Chief Woodman a link to the documents and direct her attention to the traffic analysis?
If for nothing else, just an FYI.
Yeah.
It's, it's valuable information for.
Right.
For the police department.
And that's the type of data that we, uh, we have to review too. Okay. I do have an email from a butter, but I'll wait till the public comment portion to read that in. So Blair, let's take, next, do you want to cover maybe some of your comments on layout, number two on your staff comments?
Uh, so it was largely a summary of what, uh, is being proposed. Two houses are coming off, there's twenty-five total houses on a hundred and two acres. They're proposing about seventy-nine acres for open space. Proposing two houses off of Fort Hill Road and two, uh, dead-end cul-de-sacs off of Smoke Street. One is Frederick Lane, and the other one is Peekaboo. Peekaboo will have seventeen houses, the other one will have six. I did suggest third-party review for the stormwater management and the other infrastructure. It looks like that's in motion. The project does lie within FEMA floodplain, a very small portion of it, as well as, uh, the aqua protection overlay district. Again, it's a small portion of the property, um, not a huge part, uh, but they have addressed it in, uh, you know, the two houses, um, off of Fort Hill. They are seeking a conditional use permit, um, for wetland buffer, um, but there are, they are not proposing any direct wetland impacts or crossings. So the resource self, the resource area itself is not being impacted. It's the buffer zone that we have extended past it, the twenty-five foot buffer zone, and for this project, it's at the front entrance where Peekaboo Drive would meet Smoke Street. They didn't find any vertical pulls, um, uh, which was in the report. There's varying levels of soils in terms of good, bad, um, as well as wetlands. Some are high-quality wetlands, some are not. So it's, you know, it's a large site, so it, the terrain ranges in terms of, um, what you see in there, in the way of, um, resource areas and quality of the resource areas. The only thing I would suggest is, uh, you know, there were some comments I made on the waivers that, uh, I'm hoping Chris can, uh, address, um, and that I'm hoping we can hear back from some of the other town staff on.
Yep.
Just to make everybody comfortable with it, should they decide to vote in supporting of, of the different waivers.
Okay. And then just to, just to circle back on the conditional use, um, just to confirm, so we received a conditional use permit. At least the one I'm seeing looks like it's referring to the disturbance within twenty-five feet. Oh, I see, and then it's kind of two combined. Lots larger than maximum and frontage is less than prescribed, right? So it's technically three. Okay, one application kind of covering those three requests. All right, just want to make sure.
You didn't, you didn't really, you don't really have a conditional use permit application for wetlands yet?
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Put it on the conditional use permit application for the OSS.
Sure. Now Lana, there was, again, just to keep it on the conditional use, there was some question, was the public notice missing the reference to the conditional use permit, or? I know it says it on, on what our agenda is, but the public.
They first applied, they did not apply with conditional use permits. So when I issued the first public, the public hearing, it did not have them on it.
Okay.
I, we got them the other day, and, uh, Ed thought that you can still include them in the agenda today, and that would make it okay to be able to accept the case.
Okay. Yeah, I think, and I don't think this will cause, and again, any timing issue, even on the acceptance side. We've, we've discussed this as a board in the past, is if you get a request for a conditional use permit, uh, we've even had it where it's happened a meeting or two in. It was determined that, yes, the product needed a conditional use permit. They filed for it, and there was a question of how that gets noticed, is there additional fees, public noticing? Um, we did get some opinion that if the conditional use permit and the request within it does not substantially alter the request for the project.
Right.
Uh, change the design per se, it does not need to be re-noticed with mailings, but the subsequent public notices of meetings need to include the reference to that conditional use permit. But if the board deemed it changed lots, roads, it did, was a substantial change, there would need to be re-noticing, so. Um, it, it's up to the board, but I think at this point, we do have the applications. It was, this agenda which was posted, um, was on there. If the board feels more comfortable, essentially the next public notice that'll be posted, uh, it won't be mailings, we'll, we'll include this reference. If we want to be on the safe side, we could, and we've done this, we've held off to accept the conditional use permits until the next meeting. Um, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, uh, just again, from the public mailing perspective. Do you have any thoughts on that?
To accept that, we were accepting, not to accept the conditional uses, but that, the information that's been provided.
Right, the information is, essentially the information is provided ahead of time, but I guess at least my opinion is that just because it wasn't included, the initial mailing, it was included in the public notice, it's been out on the board for the last week or so. It was, but there was some discrepancy there. Going forward, all descriptions will match. I don't think there's any harm in waiting. You're obviously gonna be receiving, uh, continuing the case and coming back to hear it. Unless there's any objection from you. In the past, we've done, and it's more so just to make sure public notices align. We obviously have the information. You've described what the intent is, so.
Yeah, and that's fine with us, just as long as the board knows that it wasn't submitted prior, because it didn't exist prior.
Yes, yeah. There's a time, right, right around the time that it was submitted.
Right.
We were voting in some of these new requirements for the conditional use permit, so.
And so I think even when I transmitted it to Elena's office, I said, I want the board to know that I know this is needed, but there might need to be additional notice provided to.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that, you know, there won't need to be any additional private mail, mailings that go out, but it will be included in public notice. So it's my recommendation that we acknowledge that we have the conditional use permits on file, um, but we hold off on, we do have to vote to accept those as well. Um, they're kind of in conjunction with this case, but we can.
Which things are, are we talking about for the conditional use on the?
It would be the conditional use permit. It would be to allow disturbance within twenty-five feet of the wetland. That's in reference to the new twenty-five foot wetland buffer that was.
And that's the one on Peekaboo?
Yes, there's some, yep.
Okay.
And then, um, the second, well, the second and third are within the same article, uh, pertaining to the open space, and it's to permit large, lots larger than the maximum allowed under open space, and allow frontage is less than prescribed in the open space regulations, and allow a reduction to the landscape buffer, so the, um, again, it doesn't. I think it's prudent just to hold off on voting on acceptance of those tonight, and we can tackle them at the next meeting, so.
I think we have to do a site visit.
Correct, some of them require site visits, so I think it'll line up perfectly. I just wanted to put that out there that we won't be discussing those tonight, uh, but we do have them. Okay. Thank you, Blair, for going through those, though. So we got fire, police, and then the last thing, um, Elena did reach out to CMA, the Town's Peer Review Engineer. They provided a, a review estimate for the project. Um, so I think we'll just have Elena forward you, uh, that estimate, and we'll get that started. I did request, there was in an email to Elena, I think, because, and we can kind of determine what degree of peer review we're looking for from the peer review engineer every time, is I would like them to focus more on the aspects that the town reviews, maybe not so much on the stormwater side, because this project does require an alteration of terrain permit, which their requirements are more stringent than the town's. So it's always great to have that as a, they have the design to that state standard, um, so it would be prudent to, I'd like to focus, certainly they'll, they'll comment on it and say, yeah, it looks up to snuff, but they're not gonna dive into the, the details probably.
So that will happen during the altering review?
It's pretty much the most of what they review. It's like eighty percent of their review is just stormwater at the state level.
All right.
And that's more so just when we're giving CMA direction, um, it'd be great to see if they've looked at it, but certainly with, as we're aware, there's a lot of information here tonight, so.
Yeah, because I mean, the stormwater, the, the, just the topography of this, it is, you know, the stormwater, I think is the.
And that's the state's bread and butter when you have an AOT permit, so. We'll coordinate that just between CMA, uh, the applicant, and Alana will kind of coordinate with them in between, so.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I've had an instance with this review company in another abutting town, uh, where they've taken the approach of commenting on non-engineering items in a plan set, which I took major exception to and was quite vocal about. I would hope that, uh, part of the review of their estimate and their focusing of what their tasks are, uh, that that's taken into consideration.
And you're referring to essentially how something might look or be injected on a plan, is that?
They were making comments on, uh, zoning review and other, um, subdivision review aspects, which I wouldn't ordinarily consider to be an engineering review item.
So something maybe not specifically prescribed in a regulation.
Right.
Okay, yep, certainly. Um, I think that's what we'll do. We'll kind of make sure that they know the scope that the board's looking for. Help us weed through all this information. Check, check numbers, especially on the traffic side. It's always good to have them. That's one of the big ones to have them help us with.
And Ian, just for my understanding and probably others too, um, is that, is that scope built, is that built by, like, do you and Ed put that together? Do you involve SRPC to what the scope will be to give them the direction, or?
Sometimes we just say, here's a project, can you review it? And then it's kind of an industry standard of, yes, I'll review the project. We have a checklist that's like the regulations, whether it's site plans, subdivision. But I do think it's prudent when you get these larger projects is, um, there's really no reason to have them spend half their time looking at stormwater when the state goes and spends eighty percent of their time doing it, and ultimately they, they have ultimate authority on the stormwater design anyway, when they're into this level of permitting, so. I think it's something that's good to start, especially in a product of this size, that it's, it's good to let them know where our focus is.
Then how long does it usually take?
Um, I think, you know, they've already seen the documents, that's how they, they've given an estimate, and I'll have Alana forward that to you. They usually are pretty quick within a week or two, because they understand as the peer review engineer, they actually have to kind of prioritize these items as a contract to the town, so. It's not two months.
Okay.
The state might take three months, but, um, their obligation is to the town to, to support us, so. It's usually quite quick. Okay.
He has a number of comments here. Are we going to address some of them, or?
Yeah, so I guess in terms of email, uh.
We've talked a little bit about the cemetery thing, but he had some other things here that we haven't really discussed tonight.
Yeah, so, uh, Chairman Veal, he did, uh, you got a copy of that before the meeting, so, uh, Ed couldn't make it tonight, so he provided some comments via email, um, clear bullet pointed. I think, uh, I don't know if everybody's read through them. I don't know if they need to be, I can try and summarize them briefly. It's more of, a lot of this, I think, is gonna need to just be responses from the applicant, um, otherwise we'll, you know. I also want Mr. Veal to hear those responses and be part of that discussion, but he, he wanted to get these out here, again, I think with the intent that you would review.
Sure.
Provide comment. If there's anything in the comments that anybody maybe had thoughts on, um, these will be posted for those in the audience, these will. Was, if there's anything in the comments that anybody maybe had thoughts on, um, these will be posted, for those in the audience, these will be posted to the page. Everything is on the planning board page. You click on the project. Every document is in PDF form. Just to quickly summarize, there's some comments regarding articles in, uh, open space subdivision design, yield plan design.
Road names?
Yeah, road names is usually one. Again, that's, I think Ed commented, "We actually don't approve road names."
Yeah, Wes does.
We have a list of great roads.
We do have a list. Um, an applicant can propose a road name to the board of selectmen.
It's not there.
And then they review and approve. Based on practice, it's, it's a lot of time, well, actually, we're E nine one one now, right?
A lot of times the folks come in with the names already, you know, I mean, a lot of times.
There's usually a tie to why, yeah.
There's a tie to it, so this probably-
I have to say, though, when I first saw, I saw Frederick and then I saw Peekaboo Drive, and I'm like, "Is that a new type of drive?" I, I, so I actually Googled it, looking for it, and I'm like, "I can't find it," so I wrote to Ed, and I'm like, "What is a Peekaboo Drive?" 'Cause I had no idea that was the name of the road.
If it's built up, that's gonna be the Halloween spot, I think.
I have a question, and it's something you didn't bring up, but it's on your, I think this is yours, right, this Stratford planning?
Yep.
On the waiver request, permit, uh, the sixth one, to permit the well radii be off the lot for which they serve. I thought well radii had to be within the lot.
That's the purpose of the waiver request.
That's why there's a waiver for it.
But why, why would you purposefully
So-
do lot sizes that make it so the well radii is, I, I'm on zoning board as well, so.
I, I'm aware of all your credentials.
I, no, I'm not saying it as a credential, thank you. All I'm saying is that we get a lot of these smaller lot sizes of, for people coming in asking for waivers because they have a small lot and they need a new septic or they need a new well. So why are we purposefully making lots that are already too small to hold the well radii? That's all I'm asking.
I, I was being comical. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I wasn't trying to offend you. So, your, your open space regulations allow for these lots to be sized this way. And in fact, uh, they allow for one hundred feet of frontage, which inherently creates a conflict with your well radius rule. Because a well radius, the total diameter's a hundred and fifty feet, so, um, your open space subdivision regulations sort of permit these lots to be sized the way they are. But another, another piece of your subdivision regulations has a, a conflict. That's the purpose for it. Now, this is very common in open space subdivisions. And, uh, what we propose is that those radiuses overlap, uh, and we, uh, provide an easement, uh, on each one of the lots for those overlapping radiuses.
Which is why I thought we went to two acre lots as minimum.
For conventional.
Yeah, but this is open, this is an open space subdivision.
Some of these aren't even an acre.
But if you, if you look at the open space subdivision regs, you'll see, they, they kind of ask for some conditional use.
Right, but this is like making them all the same size as some of the ones on, around the lake, which is a constant headache.
Yeah, so I guess we'll bring it back, just kind of big picture. Um, the town and frankly, pretty much every town has open space subdivision regulations. The idea behind the open space subdivision is to consolidate the development and preserve open space inherently why they're called an open space. But it's, yeah, and it's to decrease disturbance. Um, oftentimes people like it. It creates a neighborhood feel. Certainly reduces the amount of infrastructure that needs to go in, which-
Is better for them.
But also inherently, if it's gonna be a town road, it saves us money, and that, that's not really the primary reason. But, uh, the goal is, you consolidate your development.
I get it.
And to be honest, like, for example, in Rochester, you can go down to six thousand square feet. Good luck putting a house on that. So our town has larger regulations than actually a lot of the surrounding towns. Minimum of thirty thousand, maximum of a hundred and fifty percent, or forty-five thousand, um, square feet. So about three quarters to one acre, um, for lot sizes, minimum of a hundred feet of frontage. And then, uh, one of their requests is to go larger than the forty-five thousand. That's the, the two lots on Fort Hill. So it's, they're proposing the open space subdivision. That's why on, I think it's sheet thirty-three is the yield plan. The color renderings you have too, I think the first or-
Second sheet.
The second sheet, I think, is the conventional.
Right.
Right, so they have to provide a yield plan to show what they conventionally fit on the property. Part of this review too is, and that's why Mr. Veal provided comments, is the yield plan determines how many, the maximum number of lots.
Oh, I remember that. I remember.
One of the things that Mr. Veal had some comments on, and I think we'll, we'll hear some feedback on at the next meeting, is we need to vet that yield plan to determine if that is, in fact, um, the maximum number of lots. So, the twenty-five, I think we determined is the max, and then we'll, we'll review some elements of, um, lot calculations on the yield plan. Ed commented three bullet points on those, so. It certainly is, we do a lot, we have the open space subdivision regulations. It is in the zoning ordinance. You do need a, um, it permits a conditional use permit, keeping it at the planning board level, to waive pretty much, it's actually, you can pretty much waive any requirement in it. And again, it's more of a discussion of, um, does it benefit the project? So not every project needs to waive a portion of the landscape buffer, but some do. So that's kind of, that's gonna be part of all this, is, uh, there's obviously a number of waivers, the conditional use permits.
Okay.
I think we can, certainly if there's questions on the waivers, we'll probably wanna, we're not gonna take action on the waivers tonight. We need some more feedback from town departments and stuff before we can review those. But I don't think, unless anybody feels they'd like me to read Ed's document, read it into the record. It will be a published document on the webpage, and it's more so technical related questions that I think he wants information on. Uh, he will be at the next meeting.
I just brought it up because I, I
Yeah.
wanted to know if there's anything in there that we should be discussing, that's all.
Yep, I think there's some stuff that we will get to. Um, and I think it's beneficial if we let the applicant, it's a lot to digest in the moment, and I think it's beneficial if they come to the meeting with mo, with responses, and that's a good, more productive back and forth. But I, I, we do want to mention that those were received from the chair tonight. Does anybody else have
I just-
comments on the board? Again, I want this to kind of be a, if there's, if there's something you want to get out there that might take some time to get a response for, and we'll hear back more in the next meeting.
I wonder how this is gonna impact the school system?
In terms of pupil, uh, estimated pupils? Um, I don't know, is that?
Do we have anything on that?
I didn't do an impact assessment. I certainly can. I have before.
No, in the past, yeah, I think for the Mitchell Road subdivision, um-
I think that would be helpful.
We can request it based on the accepted, uh, calculations that are used. It's a good idea.
This is gonna be a lot of discussion.
Yes.
When you look at this plan here, and then you look at a plan that was just actually done on the other side of town, up Rock Road. Uh, there are similarities to what you see on here from where the lots are, different lots, oversized lots. When you're doing an open space subdivision, as this here, the lot sizes are all supposed to be a certain size, and then, you know, obviously asking for variance for having larger sized lots. And what we've done on that other subdivision, and how we proceeded on those plans, even though everyone's different, I understand that. But there's gonna be a lot of discussion on how this unfolds, uh, in retrospect towards what we've done in the past and of being amongst fairness of everything.
Sure, sure.
So I'm just, it's just, I know, we, this is, we're gonna be looking at this a, a while.
Yeah.
This is not gonna be something that's gonna be approved.
And that's why one thing, um, that will be important that I do want people to focus on is that we do need to, and I think it'd be important for the board at some point to take a vote, um, an internal vote on the yield plan to accept. It's important, because at that point, it, it locks in, it's-
It's kind of the, it's the next-
It's the next step. Um, some of Mr. Veal's comments relate to vetting that op, that
Yeah.
yield plan. Um, so I do suspect at the next meeting, I think that's something we do want on the early side, because that establishes the maximum number of lots. Um, and kind of keeps things moving forward without, um, waiting for meetings to maybe have questions on it, so.
Actually, Ian, I think, I, I would like to have a site meeting bef, if possible, before our next meeting, so if we can
Yeah.
schedule that with the applicant, um, I, I, in particular, would really like to walk the Peekaboo, um, road. Kind of that, where that's getting mapped out, because that seems to be the one that's having the most land, you know, disruption.
Disturbance.
Yep.
That's, and then maybe we can walk Frederick, um, as well.
Sure.
I did drive down Fort Hill yesterday, and I think I have a good sense of whereabouts that driveway is coming in, but, you know.
Yeah, I think you sure, I think that was, um, the board's found that. I think we'll, we'll kind of get through some of these board comments, just get it out there. Give Mr. Berry some, some work to respond to, and then we'll get into some, some public comment, obviously with the, the crowd we have here tonight. And then we'll, kind of the last item before we continue tonight is, let's get something on the books for a sidewalk.
Okay.
I think definitely is something to get.
And I think just for, for you, Mr. Berry, I think one of my questions too is on Peekaboo. Is, um, can some of those be turned into shared driveways, reduce the amount of culverts that are having to go over that swale? Got just something to, that was gonna be one of my questions.
If it was a consideration or some sort.
If it's a consideration, if that makes sense to help with some of the, um, ongoing maintenance, um, after the project's complete. And also just kind of, maybe perhaps reduce some of the land disruption.
Sure. Um, okay. Again, we're just, we're throwing stuff at them tonight.
Yeah.
Is there any, does anybody else have anything they want to get out there that they'd like more feedback on tonight? This won't be your only opportunity, just, if we can get it out there.
Well, that's a good thing.
The, uh, you mind if I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
The rain gardens that you proposed, um, I haven't looked at, like, their construction details or anything, uh, and, and I can't read a stormwater plan. But I, I've, I've worked with those in the past, um, and I guess I just wanted to know, uh, you know, at a high level, it, it looks like filtering water, um, encouraging, you know, recharge. What, what is, how much of, uh, what's the capacity of those? You know, compared to, um, you know, a detention basin or retention basin, uh, what's the goal with that, again, at a high level?
That's a loaded question. So, I'm gonna take my time to answer that, if you don't, if the board doesn't mind, because it's probably some of the questions that the public might have. So, as designers, we have what we call tools in our toolbox, um, to manage stormwater. We have rain gardens. We have large rain gardens. We have small rain gardens. Uh, we have gravel wetlands. We have other small, low-impact development devices that we use to manage stormwater, and I'm talking just in general. So in this site, um, because of where we are in relation to everything else in the world, we chose a number of different devices, uh, to use on the site. So as an example, uh, the larger portion of the project is Peekaboo, uh, Drive. And so inherently, uh, it's, it's a steeper area and it's a larger portion of the development, uh, and so there's more stormwater that comes off from that site. And so, in that particular case, we chose to use a gravel wetland. And, uh, the benefit to a gravel wetland is that it, uh, it takes much better care of nitrogen and phosphorus in the stormwater than a rain garden does. It's not to say a green, a rain garden's not effective, it's just not as effective as a gravel wetland is. The capacity of that particular pond is what we call the one hundred year, twenty-four hour storm event. So in this particular area, a one hundred year storm event is about eight point eight inches of rain. And so if you can imagine taking eight inches of rain over the entire surface of the project, uh, and dumping it on in twenty-four hours, it's not consistent, it's a peaking effect. We have to design a downstream container that can contain that additional flow, uh, and treat it so that it's not just discharging into the wetland at a faster rate. And, uh, there are also some volumetric, uh, components to that as well. The smaller side of the project, we're proposing, uh, a smaller gravel wetland at the entrance, um, for many of the same reasons. It's closer to a wetland, hydraulically, it's a much lower profile, and I think it does a better job at treating nitrogen and phosphorus. And again, that is designed for the one hundred year storm event also. The rain garden, uh, that, uh, the planners pointed out, uh, is off the back of the site. It's over, uh, a set of soils that allows for a high infiltration capacity. And instead of doing a gravel wetland there, we chose to do an infiltrating rain garden. And that is also designed for the one hundred year storm event, so that, uh, the stormwater that flows into it is essentially treated through the filtering system. And is then infiltrated, a certain large volume of that is then infiltrated back into the ground, uh, back into the aquifer. And the rest is detained and allowed to discharge, uh, to the natural flow pattern. We do have one other smaller infiltration cell, um, behind the gravel wetland system that is again designed to handle the one hundred year storm event. So, uh, when, when some of us think of, uh, rain gardens in a much more dense urban area, we're thinking, you know, smaller, more landscape type features. These are much more robust, uh, large ponds, uh, that allow for detention, but also allow for the, the benefits that you get out of the, uh, the smaller rain gardens.
Would you happen to have filed photos of, of products, something like this, because I, I've never seen-
Thousands of them. Happy, happy to.
You can see them on Route four.
Again, I'm just curious, 'cause what they are for, you know,
Yep.
aesthetically, what they look like, or what? Uh, because I just, I
Yeah.
You don't have to go gravel, but big, oh, with ripraps shoved in it.
No, nope, nope.
You know, so I, I don't really get it, no.
Well, and what happens to these after a few years? And you get all of the sand and stuff that goes onto roads over the winter. It's gonna end up in it, so who maintains these? And assures that they're up to snuff, and yet, maybe a hundred year is eight inches, but tell people in Florida they got eighteen not that long ago. So, I mean, what, what happens?
So, uh, there's a, we've prepared an operations and maintenance manual, uh, so it tells the users of the subdivision how to maintain these systems moving forwards, that they don't just become neglected holes in the ground, essentially.
The HOA?
The HOA.
Okay.
And in the case of the Mitchell Road project, which is, I think, one of the reasons that it, the back and forth has taken so long is, we've agreed to allow the town to maintain it if they have to, but they're not obligated to. And so how, the mechanism to allow that to take place. So that in the event the HOA isn't doing what they're supposed to do, how does the town take enforcement action, uh, to ma, make sure that they are in operation properly and that it does not affect town infrastructure? There's a piece to these ponds, uh, and devices that, what we, it's what we call pre-treatment. To ensure that, uh, sand, sediments, some solid salts, but dissolved salt is gonna move through the system, are trapped early in the system so that they don't migrate into the middle of nowhere where they really can't be effectively removed. And the, all of these ponds have those pre-treatment type systems to them. And I just want to clarify, when we're, when we say, uh, the one hundred year storm event, it's a misnomer that the storm event happens every, once every hundred years.
Mm-hmm.
It's a one percent chance that it will happen every year, and we keep it in the lottery.
There are a lot of fifty-year storms.
That's right. Um, so, but what's important to note is that the containers, essentially, these ponds that we've designed downstream, they have the capacity to hold the volume of one of those storm events at a time. Um, and so it's not just that they're able to bypass a one hundred year storm event, that the container, the bathtub, if you know what I mean, has the capacity to hold that amount of water.
And this won't be standing water.
No.
Right? In, in a period of time, short time, days, it will infiltrate back into the ground.
Yep. So the pond, the, we're required to treat the first twenty-four hours, and, uh, these ponds are designed to drain in seventy-two hours.
Yeah. Maintenance is certainly an issue. That was gonna be the follow-up question, but you got it.
Sorry.
Uh, no, it's fine. Because it does fall in the HOA, um, and that was always the issues that the public works guys had when I proposed them in the towns we're working in, but they do do a great job removing nitrogen and, and, and phosphorus. But, um, uh, and, and is there- And, and is there any, um. Is there any infrastructure, like check dams, is there outlet structures?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, just for my own identification, how would this then differ from a detention pond or retention pond?
In, in many ways, uh, they're very similar.
Okay.
Um, so, you have, uh, all of the scientific portions of the pond, at the lower le- lower levels of the pond or sometimes below grade. But the ponds are designed, you know, basically with a large storage reservoir above them, um, so that, uh, the treatment capacity is there, but also the flood storage capacity is there. So, I think, Blair, I, I think I know a little bit about the, your history and planning. And, you know, when we do a lot of projects, uh, like in Portsmouth or even downtown Dover, you know, these rain gardens might be the size of the room, they might be smaller than that. And they're taking, uh, urban flows, uh, and really just treating the urban flow for any of the hydrocarbons or phosphorus or nitrogen that comes off of those flows. And don't really address a lot of the peaking factors that we have to deal with, sort of out, uh, in these areas and the areas that are undeveloped. So, the term rain garden, where you go to the UNH Stormwater Center and you see the pretty picture of a, an urban rain garden, it's similar, but not exactly the same.
Typically, it's what's called first flush.
Right.
The first inch, half inch of rain that comes off of the roadways takes road salts, oils, phosphorus, phosphorus and nitrogen. That stuff gets pulled out, but it doesn't handle a deluge of water. And that's what I was afraid, that's why I was asking about sizing.
Yep.
Rain gardens, my experience have always been smaller scale, but again, things have changed, obviously. So, I just wanted to make sure we weren't heading down a path of, um, poorly treated. Sure, they'll get, it'll get captured, but it was something that was important to me. If it had to be a longer explanation before you left, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that, I mean, some people that have been in Portsmouth Dover, it's becoming a very common urban thing is take out a parking space and build an urban rain garden. That's a retrofit, so they're not required to design to the same standard that if you were submitting a new permit, where you have to do flood, volume control, but also treatment. Their goal is to treat as much as possible. They need a lot of maintenance because they are seeing a lot of flow. It's, in a lot of these cities, uh, it's better than just letting it go to the ocean, so.
If they were not.
Certainly, if it's, because it's, again, because it's an AOT project, AOT establishes all these regulations. It's, uh, the, the state RSAs, um, and code. So, there's surely a flood component in all of their regulations.
So, I was gonna ask that, if this was not an AOT project, would it have to be designed to the 100-year storm?
Our code, I believe, actually only calls out the 25-year max.
So, we're getting a better treatment system.
And it's also important to note that AOT only requires 50-year storm.
Right.
They like you to look at the 100-year, I think it's, and, and as designers, it's important to look at that. Not an obligation, um, it oftentimes requires oversizing a pond. But as we've seen where rain events are going, um, it's good to hear that it was designed for the 100-year storm.
It is, and, you know, I think for a lot of people in the audience, you probably worry about it, you might see punting in your neighborhood, you worry about runoff. Obviously, you have a big lake nearby that you, you want to stay pristine, it's maybe a reason why a lot of people move here. I think it's just important to, um, to make note of these things. It's by no means a reason to approve something, it's just simply, it puts things in perspective. Because, you know, I'm accustomed to designing for the 100-year, that's your, that's your minimum, right? That's where you start. But, uh, you know, it seems like with a little bit more country drainage, open space, you know, it may not be normally as, as required, but in this case, it seems to be we're heading in that direction, so.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, and to go bring it back to the HOA, I mean, that's why the town does require an HOA. We certainly don't have the staff in town to maintain ponds. Not many municipalities do, they don't want to take that on. So, that maintenance is usually contracted out, it's a requirement for a yearly inspection that's submitted to the Department of Public Works, I know that was mentioned, it's a note on the plans, uh, pretty clearly in the first couple of pages, requiring that, um, yearly report be provided. Um, the HOA does provide the conduit that if things aren't being maintained, kind of that discussion in the back and forth is the town does have recourse to have an entity to essentially enforce that maintenance on. We don't want to do that, but there is a, there is a recourse there and that, that's, uh, that's one of the reasons we do require an HOA. And it's, it's a legal, it's a legal, um, establishment for those homeowners, so. If nobody else has anything, I did have some notes. And again, I don't expect, and I can provide these to Lon, they're kind of handwritten, but I can provide them, they can be uploaded, I don't mind. Some of them, one of them I do want you to talk about real quick. That knoll, I call it a knoll, but I think you used the technical term, the esker. Is that naturally occurring in that shape and? Thought like somebody excavated something 50 years ago and left a big stockpile there, I've never seen anything like that.
We didn't put it there.
Okay.
It is pretty perfect.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's something. I have a cup, some of my comments are more so aligned with ed- uh, with ads in terms of design-related and it's more so the placement of 4K areas, um, and how excavation will be, uh, affect permitting of septic designs in these excavation areas. Um, I have some, I kind of wrote out the questions, so you can kind of just respond to those in a response letter. And again, this will be posted online. Most, so a lot of them are related to the proposed open space layout in 4Ks. The fire cistern, uh, Mr. Moran brought this up. There is a fire cistern proposed on Smoke Street, um, just south of the Peekaboo Drive connection to Smoke Street. Uh, so I did see that. I asked the question, was this, was this just, you request, you proposed it from the beginning? Because I, I know there is a dry hydrant within probably what, 200 yards of, just past Little River Road, I think there is, on the opposite side.
My recollection was that your requirements, you had requirements for cisterns for projects of this size.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Oftentimes, uh, fire chiefs require cisterns of a project this size.
Yeah.
And so, we provided for what we felt is the best spot for one, uh, and then what the appropriate sizing would be for it.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I know, I, if it had been proposed on one of the roads, I probably would have asked to be moved to Smoke Street just from a, they can serve both.
Right.
Roads and be just used for any, uh, reason. The, the idea is that cisterns aren't just for one in this neighborhood. And then, one was just, again, this is a comment, it's just more so just for plan references, just because I know people won't look at all 79 pages when they're buying a house. But just for plan references, some of the driveways are shown at like 30 feet wide or like 25 feet, or I think they just carried the width down. But just make sure if we're showing them, just show them as 12 feet so that somebody doesn't think they can pave a 24-foot driveway, um, coming down. They probably don't want to, but if they see it's on a plan, they'll, they're, a paving contractor will do it and get out of there, so. Okay. So, again, I will forward these notes, um, we do have six waivers. Um, I think there are some comments that will be forwarded. I think we'll let the applicant address some of those comments on the waivers and then we'll probably have, that'll be a separate meeting, conditional use permit. I think we've thrown enough at them tonight, we are going to continue the meeting. Um, I think we're at the point where we probably want to get into some public comment, I know I'd like to hear from some people. Thank you guys for getting as much information out there as possible. So, before I open it to those in the room, um, I'm gonna open the public hearing for, for comments. I'm here in just a second, but, but I'll first, we'll read an email that we received that I don't think the abutter was able to make it tonight. So, again, I'll open the public hearing, um, for those that want to come up and speak. Usually we do for the project first, against second, general comment, uh, third. Good luck trying to maintain that, uh, order. I didn't mention at the top of the meeting, but if anybody didn't sign in, um, at some point before you leave, everybody could make sure you sign in, um, at the table when you come in, so we'll, we'll use that in our minutes. When people do come up to the table, please address comments to the board. And then we can in turn ask for clarification, or oftentimes the applicant will hear those comments and we'll ask them to respond accordingly. If we're seeing the same comments, just kind of say ditto if you want to add to it. The goal here is, we're not here, um, hearing the same thing over and over. But we do want to hear, if you want to support something that was said earlier, um, please do come up and, and speak. That's, this is the avenue for it, so. I'll read this email real quick from an abutter. Well, first I'll make sure, is Lon or Shannon Weston here tonight? No, okay, still want to read it, they're here. Um, I'll read this email and then we'll open up to everybody else in the, in the audience. Uh, this is an email dated April 20th. I don't know, has this been uploaded along to the page? No, so, um, we can make sure that the applicant gets a copy of this as well, um, but I'll read it real quick. Uh, hello, planning board members. I wanted to introduce myself, well, I guess this is kind of an intro, just explaining why they couldn't come this evening. So, the start of the meeting. We fully understand the property owners have a right to develop their property if they wish. Thoughts and concerns, and then we get into some bullet points. Fort Hill Road is very narrow, I usually have to pull over and stop my truck to let another vehicle pass. Winter is much worse as we lose a foot to two feet of width with the snowbanks, depending on season. Shannon has gotten stuck in snowbanks pulling over for rubbish trucks and delivery vehicles. I on many occasions have had to back up and pull in a neighbor's driveway to let a vehicle pass during heavy snowfall winters. I understand from the protected aquifer map that the proposed subdivision is built on top of it. With the proposed roads, has there been a road salt groundwater intrusion study done? That's one question. I have not been able to study all the documents on the town website yet, as some are very large. Look at, looking at the latest proposal maps, the road shared driveway looks as though it is right next to my driveway. I understand there is a buffer between my property line and the proposed road slash shared driveway. Uncertain at this point on footage. And will we lose privacy in our yard? So, I think this is kind of regarding the dimensions of that area and what the, what kind of buffer there will be or what will be proposed. Uh, the last bullet point here is, does the town of Nottingham have a plan for keeping a certain amount of acreage green to keep the rural feeling that drew our family here? Thank you sincerely, Lon and Shannon Weston, 28 Fort Hill Road. So, some of the, again, you'll get a copy of these, some of these are just general concerns about Fort Hill Road and the capacity of it. I know that's been mentioned by some other board members and we will certainly re- walk that and review it on the site walk. A road salt groundwater intrusion study. I don't know, would that have been part of your, not, I know there's a hydraulic study completed, right? But, um, so I think there hasn't been one. I guess I would ask the applicant maybe to just consider a response to how, what is being proposed on the site is, will treat or control salt. You've already kind of mentioned some of it. And then regarding the road and shared driveway that, uh, appears to be adjacent to, um, the abutter. I think, again, we'll review this area as part of the site walk. Uh, this is the shared driveway. This is the area that the, some of the buffer conditional use permit is requesting relief on. So, that'll be kind of reviewed as part of our review of the conditional use permit. And then, keeping a certain amount of acreage green, that kind of goes to, uh, i- i- if the open space subdivision moves forward, which I believe the intent is, um, there's about 79 acres to remain in open space of the 102. So, yes, the, the town, and that's, that's in excess of what the town requires, um, based on my simple math there. So, that, uh, we have those comments, we'll make sure the applicant gets a copy of that. So, at this point, um, if you can come up, if anybody else wants to speak, um, please come up, take a seat at the table. Just be sure to state your name and address. And, uh, yeah, I guess at this point, anybody for the application? And I guess we'll go to against or general comment, we'll just throw those together. Don't all run up at once. This will not be the only public hearing. There will be no more mailings going out to individual abutters, but the public notices will be posted here at Town Hall, on the website. And I believe the post office, there's a couple legal standings, so. Lon? Yeah, go for it.
I just arrived, so I'm hesitant to say.
That's, that's all right, yeah, please just state your name and, uh, name and address and direct any comments to the board and.
My name is Amber Smith and I'm at 46 Kennard Road. So, I guess I have some concerns more about, um, the fact that they're not far enough away from swamp land and then the situation with the abutting and not having the space that they're supposed to have there. So, I guess I'm a little confused on why we have those restrictions if we're just going to allow them to do it anyway. Along with just the simple fact that I don't know how many kids will move into the neighborhood. I know our school system is kind of a little bit tough and go on the space that we have. Are we gonna now have to for sure expand because we've reached the limit in the capacity of the students that can go there? Also, we all somewhat aware of the stuff that's going on with the fire department and the road crew. That's all gonna affect this new coming in. So, I just don't know if our town at this point in time can so support something like that along with them, allowing them to just surpass those two rules that we have in play. I mean, they're there for a reason, so, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, I think some of this will kind of work itself out. Um, we'll take a stab at trying to address some of it. The proximity of the wetlands, so the development, there's essentially, there's, there's three documents that the town, the planning board reviews to, uh, reviews applications to, we have the site plan reviewer applications, um, or site plan review regulations, excuse me, the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance, um, depending on what is being proposed. In this case, it's a subdivision, so you would be looking at the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. So, certain elements in there, uh, the town, even as recently as this year, has voted on certain elements that we felt were important to incorporate in the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations. There is always an avenue to relea- require, or request relief from these requirements. So, um, as Miss Bascom stated, you get a lot of relief for zoning on lots on the lakes that maybe can't make setbacks for septic systems. Variances, which is to the zoning ordinance is handled by the zoning board. The planning board in certain instances builds in what's called a conditional use permit, which is a way of saying it's an item that is within the zoning ordinance, but it's the purview of the planning board. So, it's, it's more efficient to keep the review and approval of that request for relief at the planning board level. Uh, the conditional use permit is a little bit more involved in terms of the criteria that they have to address via their narrative. And then, in this, if it's a requirement in the site plan or subdivision, there's a waiver request process. Again, they have to justify, explain why they're requesting the relief. And then as the board, the board reviews the reasoning, weighs the particular project. There's, many projects do require some degree of relief. It's the nature of, I guess, really the, the buildable land that's left in the state, frankly. So, we certainly, we have to review those, we're not reviewing and voting on them tonight. We've, some of the additional information we've requested is to provide additional information for us to review those requests. And certainly at that time, the board will take action on, is relief warranted? And we, there's a criteria again, it can't just be financial, it can't be the reason for relief, um, there's a whole list. And what was the other thing I was gonna say to that? I think it's, you know, for example, I'll, I'll state, we didn't have a 25-foot wetland buffer, which is one of the conditional use permits actually, until March 28th this year. That was one of the items that we proposed. So, again, the goal is, we're continuing to look at the ordinance. The idea there with our buffer, and I think this was discussed at the board level, was there was never a provision. You could put a driveway two foot, two feet from a wetland boundary with no need for relief. The idea there is that we understand there is sometimes a ti- a need to develop within a certain distance of a wetland. But by requiring that conditional use permit, it means we are allowed to focus more on that development. It's not a by right situation that somebody can put a driveway between two, two wetlands, which we saw quite often, actually was the reason we proposed that this year. So, in terms of the relief items, it's, every case is different. And we certainly have a number of requests to review and I think we'll dive into those at the next meeting. But again, it really is a truly a case by case. The school department, or impacts to the school, I think we've requested some additional school impact data. The school department, or impacts to the school, I think we've requested some additional school impact data. And then there is obviously impact fees on the project. But I think we'll, I think we'll get into more of the school impacts as the project as a whole when we get some of that information on the school. Data from the applicant. And then impact to fire and roads, that's why we asked for the input from all the departments. Uh, we've already received some input and I think one of the things that the town, the board will review is, you know, do we feel there is impacts to surrounding infrastructure? That warrants, um, discussing with the applicant. We certainly will get into, I think the goal here tonight is to try and get as much of what everybody thought in the first, I say figuratively, the first five minutes of looking at plans. But there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of back and forth here, um, in the upcoming meetings. And I know even on my list, some of these were to address more in depth, those impacts to the town. And again, if you attend future meetings, um, if that, if there's additional information provided and you still have additional questions, we always want to hear. People continue to, to discuss it. Anything else, again, we will open the public hearing in the future.
Yep.
My name is Rebecca Smith, I'm at fifteen Smoke Street. When we first started this whole thing, um, originally the road was up against our property line and they said, oh, you can't do that. I know they're having a problem with down in this corner. I personally would rather have the road up against our, you know, between our property and the homes. If it makes, makes it easier to do what they need to do down in the corner.
Oh, do you mean just in regards to?
They originally had the road coming in close to our property line.
Yeah, so I think this is going back to the design review application, which I want to say was early two thousand twenty-two.
Personally, I'd rather have the houses as far away, even at weekend with, you know, so.
Sure, and I think that was more so, yeah, there is actually a new road setback requirement that was also voted on at the town this year. And I think at the board level, um, we agreed during that designer view process that from a planning practice sense. Placing roadways as far away from a butters as possible was.
I would rather have the road.
Sure, yeah. We look at it, obviously we, we look to a butter feedback, but we also look at, um, you know, fifty years from now, what does that look like in terms of, you know, homes exchange hands, it's just more of the, the planning practice around it and.
You don't buy the house if you don't like the way it is, I mean.
Yeah, so, and that, that was more so, during that design review process, there was concern at the board level that that road was. Right along the property line, cause I believe you're just to the north, correct?
Where, 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 no, I.
If you're.
Yeah, no, no, actually, we're, yeah, we're, we're the, we're the first lot next to.
Frederick.
Fred, yeah, Frederick, I forget what name it was.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, that was, um. More of the, the board would like to see roads further away from homes. And if you look at where this is proposed now, I think some of the board would agree. There's obviously a lot on the other side, but it's, the road is more central, the homes are there. Closer to the road as well, so. But yeah, our, our zoning ordinance actually does require a road setback, so. It would be, it actually required quite a bit.
So we didn't have that till recently?
We did not, it, it used to be that you could propose a fifty-foot piece of land to put a road and you could. Put the road twenty feet from a, a lot line. Which again, just going back to the, the planning principles, I think the board chose during that design review process to, we wanted to see that road.
Now you can't do a waiver on something like that?
You can, um, ultimately it's the purview of the applicant to move the road. And obviously there is a board we can discuss if, if we want to discuss it. But no, thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
Uh, would that be a variance or would that be a waiver?
That was a modification to. Would be a variance because I believe that was in the next to driveway setback.
Right.
So that would be a variance, yeah. If, if that was being proposed, or if it is proposed. Anything else tonight?
I'm Cameron Reed, I'm from one oh-three Kelsey Road. My concern is. Right by the power lines, right by fifteen Smoke Street is again doomed with the water. Cause there is a little bit of wet up there and it does run down towards a four-way stop and it does actually run under my property. I just want to make sure I have the assurance that no more water is gonna end up on my land.
So this.
Because if they're gonna have a road and house, everything's gonna get raised up, water's gonna get pushed off. So if it comes down to my land, to me, I have a problem.
Understood.
Where are you getting?
One oh-three Kelsey Road, right at the four-way stop, four corners.
So I obviously don't, and this is the concern with specifically the Frederick Drive, the shorter road, is that?
Correct.
Obviously I don't have distances on me, but I guess my first thought is. That's a decent ways away, I'm not sure topography wise where the brakes.
Water already run, so right up by the power lines there, there's like a little swamp area. It runs down to the four-way stop, goes underneath Mill Pond, turns, goes underneath Kelsey right onto my land. So if all this gets built up, where's all this extra, as long as that extra water isn't gonna be going that way towards me.
Right, okay.
That's my main concern.
Right, okay. And just to confirm, the lot. It does, that's what I was trying to remember off the top of my head.
Cause like basically that, that's way up here, I'm down here, so.
Yep, okay.
To me, I would look at that as a significant amount of water that's gonna come my way.
Kind of like through that, don't you? Yes, okay. All right. Yep, that makes sense, uh, we'll ask the applicant just to address it, I mean, from a stormwater perspective, they're required to meet pre and post.
Which is great and I've learned a lot by sitting here, I just, I just want to make sure as things, you know, I don't know, I guess I'll be keeping an eye on stuff.
And we can ask the applicant to address that, um, either tonight or if they want to.
As long as I have assurance that nothing's gonna be continuing, you know, more going down that way.
More impactful.
Right, that's, thank you.
That's the golden ticket. Anybody else tonight, again, yep?
Martin Rocket, uh, nineteen Smoke Street. Um, so many of the same concerns of others that have already spoke. Um, but in addition, um, you know, our highway department seems to be struggling greatly at maintaining our roads. I don't know if anybody's been down Smoke Street, but it's, it's really bad. Many layers of pavement missing. Big potholes, flat tires, broken rims, all that kind of stuff. Um, also groundwater, and I'm gonna have seventeen additional wells now on top of my house, so. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, um. One thing we haven't mentioned tonight that the applicant will have to submit for that, and the, the, what the comments on wells reminded me is that this will also require state subdivision approval. And certainly each lot will require septic approval as well. So the state again, kind of reviews a lot of those well criteria and requirements, so. That's a subsequent, we do, we don't, that's not a permit required prior to approval, it's a subsequent, like most state permits. But, um, certainly we do have regulations in town with concerns over wells and septic, so. Road condition, I think we've heard from the director of public works, there'll be some response to him. I think we might even, it's, it's gonna be prudent when we establish this site walk, we will also extend that invite to town departments and encourage them with a project this size to try and have somebody show up. Ideally those. Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anybody else in the public tonight, again, there'll be another opportunity? Yep. No worries. Yeah.
So if I understand correctly, Malcolm himself, uh, twenty-two Fort Hill Road.
Thank you.
There's a hundred and two usable acres. And you're gonna build on twenty-two? So there's gonna be twenty-five houses on twenty-two acres with roads?
Yes.
How big are the house lots?
Uh.
Less than one acre.
Less than one acre.
Yeah, the, the town.
So you guys have a rule that says a hundred and fifty feet for, for a well, but you're gonna break the rule because the lot sizes are too small. I, I just heard. Right? So two things can happen, you can change your rule. Which means it gets less, which doesn't make a lot of sense, or you make the lots bigger to cover the, you know, having a rule that you're gonna grandfather. I'm a grandfathered well and lot size from the last time they restructured zoning.
Right.
So it doesn't make a lot of sense to start off a new project. It's already small and it's supposed to be to cover what you already put in place.
So the lot size is being proposed for all but two?
Yeah, but I'm saying, he said, he said a hundred and fifty feet is our own rule.
It's also a state rule. That, that's part of our problem.
I'm saying, but we're, we're gonna okay a lot for a hundred feet.
It's the practice of, and again, the, the approval of the location of a well in our town in reference to a septic system. Falls at the state level, uh, the town does get a copy and reviews, but it's the state level. That seventy-five foot radius, the hundred foot, fifty foot diameter is a state requirement. And then there's underneath that requirement.
Yeah, but I, I get what you're saying, okay, but why would you make a hundred and fifty rule and then make a lot size a hundred? Why? In a planning state.
It, sure, in.
Plan it to be at least a hundred and fifty. And you will eliminate the problem.
In the sense of open space development, the idea.
Yeah, but out of the open space, seven acres, how much of that is wetland? What percentage of that is wetland that they can't build on?
Uh, we can, we can ask that, but to, the reason that the, the reference to the one fifty and say the town requirement of thirty thousand to forty-five thousand square feet, minimum width of one hundred.
I have a minimum width of a hundred, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, the reason that you then say, okay, well, why do we have a requirement of less than a hundred and fifty for that is. In the, again, it kind of goes back to general, the reason towns develop the open space ordinance is that there's these buffer areas that are still within the scope of the project, so there's a lot of this protected land, is that, and you'll see this on the plans.
Well, protected land I get, but it's not usable land, it's, it's mostly wetlands they can't build on. I walked, I walked out there.
It has to be usable land, protected land has to be, there has to be a percentage of.
Right, that's what I was just asking, what was that percentage?
So in the open space layout, and it is the case in this, it's a lot times with that open space subdivision, is those well radius will extend off of a piece of property, either adjacent to another, but also extend into the open space. But still within the scope of, if you look at this, it's one parcel now, no well radiuses go beyond the existing limits of the parcel. But you can utilize.
That's a problem with, and again, I'm not saying this, but when an HOA dissolves, that each person then has to develop their own well. And they, and they're already restricted to a point where if the, if that, that lot isn't big enough to put another well on, because it's part of the other property. Then how do you get a well? Or you go for a variance. So in the beginning, why start with, have and have a variance to the rule that you created?
What I will say is, I've never seen an HOA, I don't even know if you can dissolve an HOA.
Anything can be dissolved, whether it is right or wrong. I mean, at some point money runs out of whatever, or legal purposes, but at some point.
I mean, the hypotheticals around an HOA dissolving are a bigger issue that.
I was the last, I was, I was, I used the wrong word, it was an association I wasn't with, that dissolved.
Right. Hopefully it doesn't happen that fast.
But I'm just, meaning there was, there is that possibility that something goes wrong.
Correct.
And then it's, I'm assuming there's a tax break for somebody. Because the taxes on the house lots is gonna be a lot less than if it's a two-acre house on it, with a five hundred thousand dollar house on it. Then seventy-seven acres of wetland, they're not gonna get taxed at the same rate as a house lot.
Are you saying the taxable value of a house on a two-acre versus?
So I'm saying my taxes are based on my house and my land.
Yep.
So on an HOA, I'm gonna, I have a, I have a house on a, on a poacher stamp with a tax rate, so I'm paying less taxes at that house because I have less land.
But you also own, you also own.
You're paying the HOA, which is paying a, I'm assuming, less than tax rate than house, house lot.
So the HOA.
Also own all the common land, you own a portion of all the common land, the common land isn't tax free.
No, but it's a tax at the same rate.
No, so, well, I mean, the taxes are different, so if you own one of these lots, you individually pay taxes on the value.
And then you pay an HOA fee.
Correct, on top of that, so I mean, I guess.
Taxes and the road use and all that, I understand that, but it's a different rate?
The HOA, if they pay a tax, would only be a tax on the open space.
Right, which is the seventy-nine acres that you're not using.
Correct, but it's no different than say taking a five hundred thousand valued house on an existing thirty thousand square foot lot, which is plenty in town, so I guess there's.
What I'm saying is, so somebody's not paying the same tax rate on all that land for the town. If that was in just really two-acre lots like it used to be in town, then you'd get two acre taxes and a house, for X amount of houses that would fit in that hundred and two acres.
I think, so I guess to that point is.
At the same rate you would, it's, it's gotta be less money.
But the individual is paying, I mean, this is all, this.
Well, they're paying twice, it actually sucks for the individual, to be honest with you.
What, I, I guess.
It gets more.
This is a land use meeting, this isn't a.
I don't mean, right, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to hijack it, but.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of details that go into the legal and the assessing of it.
And the only thing, I'll stop that, cause I'll let that go, but the other thing I was gonna say is, you said twenty-five feet wetlands variance on a driveway.
That was in reference to until March this year.
Yeah, I agree, hundred percent, but you said driveway, should it be different for a road?
It's for any disturbance.
I know, but you're talking about a driveway, like you just said it's twelve feet and the road's twenty-five feet. So if the wetland variance doesn't allow for a twenty-five foot road. With twenty-five feet, they wouldn't be able to put a road in without that variance because of the wetlands.
So the twenty-five feet is we placed a twenty-five foot buffer to wetlands and.
But you said driveway, for twelve, you, it was put in place so you couldn't put a driveway, which is twelve feet you just said.
We've seen, it was, the driving force was.
Yeah, I agree, I'm agreeing with what you did, I just think the road should be further. Because you have twi- you know, when I shovel my driveway. More traffic, more salt, more, more water coming off of it and a closer proximity to the wetlands that you're trying to save by having a setback. I agree with the setbacks, but the road should be more than that. Because it's twice as much space.
Further away from it.
Further away.
You're, oh, you're getting at the possibility of an additional, a different setback for the roadway.
A road should be different than a driveway, it's twice as big.
Yeah, our, the twenty-five foot buffer is for any disturbance, road, driveway.
I agree, so maybe, maybe at some point at the board level, there's that distinction between, all right, here's, here's this much for a driveway. But if we're talking about putting a road in between wetlands, that's a different animal.
And that's why it is reviewed on a case by case basis with the conditional use permit.
Maybe this was his case.
Yeah, so there's, it, that will, that type of thing is what the board discusses and reviews.
Oh, that's fine, that's up to you guys, I just heard it tonight, so I was like, whoa, that doesn't.
I will say though, that the new roadway, because of, again, this goes back to state requirements. There will be no direct discharge from say a road surface into a wetland. It has to be captured, controlled in some fashion.
Oh yeah, I did have one other question, when they said treated, does that mean just filter through the dirt?
Media, not.
It's, I don't mean, I'm not pouring punch, there's no traps, there's no, there's no drainage that you cleaned up by pump trucks for the base of the culverts.
There's no closed drainage catch basins currently.
Like a culvert goes down in the pipe, was that like, it's like, kind of like your septic set where the sediment sits in the valet, something comes through, cleans that out, cause that's where the initial sand and et cetera, et cetera is gonna all fall first, otherwise it will end up in the pond.
Right, so there's no closed, that you were describing, it's called closed drainage, there's none of that proposed at the moment. Uh, it's open or country drainage is a lot of people propose, which is, again, you don't need to open, get confined space, so.
So it's filtered through the ground.
Yeah, the, the ponds themselves are designed with some degree of filtration, again, to a state standard.
Yeah, no, I agree, I'm good there, okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, again, we will have, uh, we'll, we'll close the public hearing tonight, but it will be reopened at the, the next hearing. I guess I'll bring it back to the applicant, if there's anything you'd like to.
I'll just, I'll just tag you the times, cause also it was about eight, it was eight nineteen that we opened it.
Yep.
Now, eight forty-eight.
Yeah. I'll bring it back to the applicant if you want to address any comments from the public tonight, or if you'd rather just kind of. I'm fine with, uh, if you'd like to address it in a future meeting, have time to think about it. But if there's anything you want to get.
Let's do this tonight.
All right.
Uh, there's only, uh, there's only two comments that I think, uh, really should be addressed tonight, cause just, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding or misconception about the project moving forward.
Sure.
To the people that live directly adjacent to the, just make sure we can see it on screen. Directly adjacent to the property here on Smoke Street. If we were to, their request might be counterintuitive to why they're asking. So I think they're asking us to put a road here so that they don't have houses that abut them in their business that they run there. And that's counterintuitive to the way we've designed this, because if we were to put a road here, we could have houses much closer than a hundred feet to their boundary line. In the current project design, we're keeping a one hundred foot buffer to their boundary line and our boundary line, so that no. And, uh, our boundary line, so that no house could be closer than one hundred and twenty feet. From the common boundary line. If we were to place a roadway there, uh, we could place a fifty foot roadway there, or whatever the new zoning is, I clearly need to review that. And then a front setback, and then there could be a house, so there could be a home much closer than what we're proposing, if we were to place the roadway here. Additionally, uh, as I pointed out in my conditional use impact request. Placing a roadway in this location, from a topographic standpoint. Has other sort of negative attributes to it, considering where we're proposing. So, there's a much higher ground there, getting a roadway up onto that would have additional disturbance. Um, would open that area up adjacent to their boundary line, much more than I think they would actually prefer. Um, the second, uh, comment has to do with our conditional use permit, uh, request to be within twenty-five feet of the wetland system. We're not proposing a road within twenty-five feet of the wetland boundary. We're proposing disturbance within twenty-five feet to install the proper treatment system needed. For the stormwater that comes off the roadway. And I think there's sort of a misconception about, uh, the conditional use permit process. The process for conditional use permits is put in place so that it forces both the board. But more importantly, in my mind, the applicant, to really review what they're proposing within those impact areas. To make sure that it's done in the best way possible, the best location possible, and done to the highest standard possible. And so that the applicant proposes something of the best and highest quality for the board to then review. Um, and those are the criteria in which we utilize to, uh, request. And the board use is to approve conditional use permit applications. So, it's not a matter of whether or not we have the right to access our property with a road, we do. It's really a question of whether or not we're doing it in the best place possible, given all the features of the land. And we're doing it the most responsible way, and that we're treating the stormwater that would otherwise just drain to the wetland. How do we, how are we treating that, so that it's to the best quality, uh, that we have in our toolbox? So, really, those of all the comments that we heard, those are the two that I think are the most important to address tonight. The stormwater impacts, uh, further down the roadway, I'm certainly happy to take a look and see how much this project contributes to that. Uh, I think that there's a cross culvert right at our project that cuts this flow off, but I'm happy to walk, uh, the area and just make sure that. If there's something that should be included in our analysis, we include it for further submission, and if it doesn't, I'll explain why.
Yeah, where that hydra, I'm curious where that hydraulic break is, I think what you're getting at is. Yeah, if there's anything, if those or any of the other comments, if you wanna incorporate those into general responses as part of the other responses and to comments. Feel free to do so. I think with that, we'll just, uh, let's, let's figure out a date and time for a site walk. Um, the, the board thinks so. Um, I know, I believe in Mr. Veal's email. He consider, or suggested that we consider a weekend time for the reason. That it's a large site, it's a large site to walk. Um, oftentimes, we do sitewalks that maybe we're out there for thirty, forty-five minutes, uh, on average. I don't think this is gonna be a thirty minute site walk. I guess, I'll open it to the board, or is there, I guess we'll start with, is there any? And we don't need the entire board, we're not trying to look for, we need a hundred percent of the board, the goal here is to try and find something that most people could attend, it's not a requirement. Uh, the public is invited, it will be posted. Are there any? Yeah, we'll start with weekends first, and if we find that, uh, I don't want this to be pushed out for weeks to try and find a site walk time.
I could do weekends after one o'clock or one thirty. I do, I do volunteer work in the mornings on weekends.
And that is.
On Saturdays, and I don't do anything on Sunday, but.
Yeah, and there's nothing that says, yeah, Saturday or Sundays, obviously.
I could do any time on Sunday, but I can only do, um, after one o'clock, uh, one, one thirty on Saturday.
Have to see what my wife is putting on. Any other dates that don't work, or somebody wanna throw a suggestion? I guess let's look.
What are we gonna continue the meeting to?
I was gonna say, I was gonna, uh, did you guys have anything in mind, did, did you wanna come right back to the next meeting, did you want to? Anything in mind in terms of your timeline?
Well, as long as the board's comfortable with us being on the second meeting of the month, thirty days is fine with us.
May twenty-fourth meeting? I think the board would be amendable to that, because I, I think we have another decent product to discuss on May tenth. Okay, so that's a May twenty-fourth, so the goal here is to hold a site walk prior to May twenty-fourth. This will also be, I didn't mention, this will be extended to the Conservation Commission as well. I guess at that point, I would throw out there the weekend of. I won't be here the twentieth, but if that works for most people on the board, again. Uh, it also will be, it's vacant land, I'm sure the applicant doesn't mind if I walk the site myself. I'm happy to let you guys know as well.
Signed a document that said we permitted you to.
Sure, um, that's a good, uh, everybody can remember what they saw. Uh, did the twentieth work for most?
That's Saturday?
Saturday, the twentieth. We can do an afternoon, uh, as Mr. Jones suggested. Or mid-morning works better. I couldn't even tell the last time we've done weekend sitewalks, so I don't know. We've never had to, and that's fine, so again, you have, if you wanna drive by, um, yep. Do we wanna say the twentieth? At two o'clock, or is that ruined, is that the middle of the day?
I think we need to move to the morning, no offense, Sandra.
I was just letting folks know where my limits were.
What dates do you normally go?
We usually do it on a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday?
Wednesday that we, we're not doing it.
A Wednesday, but.
So, that would be the seventeenth, which would be the Wednesday prior.
That's true. I mean, if, if the board's fine, we could.
You wanna set at six o'clock, you got two hours out there to look.
Or if folks can make it at like five or five thirty.
We've done five thirty, I think is the earliest, so people can try and leave. I know Ed's more of a five thirty, I think.
He should also, he also wanna work out what's good for the Conservation too, since you're inviting them, and that's a good sized board.
Yeah, um, I do feel the weekend, weekday would probably give, be more attendance, I know, at least for me. So, then I guess let's, why don't we propose, uh, May seventeenth at five thirty? Does that work for the applicant, and again, as many of the board members can attend, not required in the evening?
And what day of week is that?
What's that?
What day of the week is the seventeenth?
Wednesday, May seventeenth at five thirty, um, we do have daylight until seven thirty, eight by that.
Sun setting right now, I think the time is seven forty-five, it's, it's sunset.
I think we will get a higher attendance. Then that's what I would, I guess I'd take a motion, again, we're gonna extend this, as many people that can make it, great. Um, we will extend an invite to the Conservation Commission as well.
Do we need a motion for the seventeenth?
We have done in the past, because it gets posted, it gets posted, so if I could have a motion for the seventeenth.
Yep, five thirty.
Five thirty.
I make a motion that we hold a site visit for case zero, zero, four. Uh, twenty-three, zero, zero, four, Sub Residence at Fort Hill, for May, Wednesday, May seventeenth at five thirty.
My second.
And where, where should we leave?
Yeah, that was my next.
So, the entrance, the northern entrance is probably the best place to park.
Which is where?
Peekaboo.
Yep, there's.
I believe there's more space on the side, the shoulders.
I guess I'll figure it out.
Alright, with that, uh, we'll do. Uh, so with that, we have a motion for a site walk, May seventh, Wednesday, May seventeenth at five thirty, uh, meeting place to be. The approximate location of the proposed Peekaboo Drive entrance, which is just south of Little River Road, um, intersection.
Just south of which?
Little River.
Look for the cars, I'm sure some people will be there. Um, so we have a fir, uh, first and a second, uh, everybody in favor? Aye? Alright, I'll take that as a full pass. Okay, with that, uh, I'll take a motion now to continue, um, I believe we've heard from the applicant. The May twenty-fourth meeting.
At seven. I'll make a motion that we continue case twenty-three, zero, zero, four, Sub Residence at Fort Hill. For, um, May twenty-fourth at seven.
Second.
First and a second, uh, first, Ms. Anderson, second, Ms. Bascom. Um, with that, I'll take a vote, uh, for May twenty-fourth at seven PM continuance, all say, all in favor? Alright, um, the only thing I'll throw in there is just try and get stuff to us as soon as you can, package together, and I'm sure we'll have another fun discussion. Um, and then again, for those in the public, uh, there will not be any mailings that go out, if you were a direct abouter and received one before, but there will be. Um, your best course of action is honestly to monitor the Planning Board website, the agenda's posted there, documents for this project. Homepage for the Planning Board, you can't miss the button that you click for current applications. And Alana, she uploads things as they come in, they all get organized per case, so you don't have to go hunting through, uh, everything's well organized, so. We'll see everybody back, um, on May twenty-fourth for this. Thank you. Alright, let's, uh, move through the rest of this. So, we'll just move right into other business, um, we have one here voting on secretary, I think it, we were gonna wait if, watch back the meeting. Yeah, we'll still, I think we just.
Can we remind them that we still have a meeting?
Oh, yeah. Alright, so, I think, uh, we'll wait on the vote on secretary, because Ms. Mooney wasn't able to join us this evening, just because I think we want. I watched back the meeting, I wasn't able to attend last time. Thank you for voting on the vice chair, I'm so happy. So, I think we'll push off, uh, letter A, uh, to the next meeting, when hopefully Ms. Mooney can join us. Uh, review, adopt, and sign bylaws, do you have, I believe, I assume that's what.
Yeah, everybody already has imminent binders. And lastly, they just wanted to need to print this sign, she's already.
Are they the same?
Yes, those, she said the same.
Okay, alright, so before everybody leaves, we'll just choose a spot to sign, and then we'll just have Ed fill in and Sue fill in, and we'll, we'll sign these. Yeah, I mean, if we wanna, we can just pass, just sign one of them, I don't want people to sign both. Choose your right spot. You're on the right there. Okay, I'll just keep things moving. Um, we have on here, review the Planning Board action items and vote on the hierarchy of importance. I was gonna, I think, uh, obviously Ed was instrumental in creating this list, I know he had some thoughts on the hierarchy of importance. This is really, uh, there's obviously impact fees are important, and then a lot of this is driven towards regulation ordinance related items that we wanna look at amending. It's still fairly early in the year, um, but I think just, it'd be nice to have a little bit more of the board here, so. I guess I'd vote to keep, Alana, I think we'd keep that on for other business with A. Um, so we'll push A and C forward to next meeting. Review the application checklist, now including findings of fact. Do we wanna push that as well, because Ed was also, and we don't have any. Uh, the, the goal here is so that we're clear on findings of fact. We're not voting to approve anything now, or even at the next meeting, so. That might be wise to just discuss at the same time as.
Sounds good.
Action items, we do not need to sign the MYLAR, uh, Ed came in this morning and signed the Mitchell Road MYLAR plan. So, and you only need the chairperson's signature legally to, they wanted to pick it up earlier in the day and record it this afternoon, so. The Mitchell Road subdivision, which some of you might remember, it's already been cleared, but, uh, that sounds like that'll be moving forward. Uh, review recent DES notices and the button notifications, so the town does receive these when you submit NHDS permits. Whether it's, uh, a number of different types of permits. I read through these, uh, one of them was a request for more information on a shoreline permit on eighteen Sunrise Lane in Nottingham. Really, what the reason here is to review and determine, does the board think it was something that relates to planning? Oftentimes, shoreline doesn't, when, if, for it's an individual homeowner, it oftentimes doesn't relate to what we would review at the board. Zoning board sees a lot of shoreline related items, and honestly, you might have seen whatever. This isn't very clear as to like, they, they don't put a description of what the project was on the RFI, I assume we probably received something when they first submitted, but. I didn't see any issues there. I did wanna mention this one, though, because I know it's been an issue in the past, this one is from Vegetation Control Service, on behalf of New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Um, to selectively apply herbicides to undesirable vegetation growing within power line rights, right-of-way corridors. They state what license they have to apply it. And I'm trying to see, they do highlight where.
You're talking about them spraying to kill them, like.
Japanese knotweed or something?
Uh, yeah, that kinda, I'm just trying to. It looks like, so they did provide a map of.
Don't they just spray along the, the heavy, the power line?
Right, which might be along the road, but also, as we're aware, they kinda sometimes have cross-country, um, routes. Uh, so let's see, I mean, it's, if, if somebody wants to look at this map, it looks like it's, say, um. Acrylis, South Summer Street, some, yep, Sengau Road, around Nottingham Lake, the Fort Hill area. The part, I mean, parts of case, that's actually quite a bit, that's, uh, Mill Pond.
So, it's around the water, that's why it's going to DES.
Yeah, this is actually, I think this is, might have just received, it doesn't even say it's to DES, but. This is, I think, just their yearly herbicide maintenance, um, I think this board's concern was more so. This is pretty, if I'm looking at this map, this is pretty much all of New Hampshire Co-op's infrastructure in the town. I know they did. The, uh, the cutting was the concern last year, the. Squort, squort, scorched earth cutting, they are required to come in person for approval on scenic road cutting. Which I know, Charlene's looking to get her claws in somebody, so. We do have, if somebody wants to look at it, but this is more herbicides treatment, if anything, it takes work off the Public Works Department, and not having to do their invasives. They have their program, this is year three.
So, do they, they're just notifying us that this is what they're doing?
Yeah, so.
They have the legal right to just go ahead and spray?
Yeah, so there's a state law, and if they are a certified applicator. As New Hampshire Co-op, as their client, they're allowed within the state, as they follow state regulations, to apply, but. As a courtesy, and it, it could be in the state RSAs, they're required to notify the municipality, but there's no like application to do so. It's like somebody, if I had mosquito squad come out to my property, it's just on a slightly different scale. But they are authorized to, under a state license.
Under a state license, state's regulating them to go and do that.
Right, so when they apply their, the herbicide, they are required to do it in, obviously, a certain manner. Best management practice is what they call it. Sign this. The lower ones. Um, so people can look at that if they want. The last thing I have here is approval of the March eighth minutes, and I believe you said that Ms. Mooney did review and provide comments on those?
These ones, yes.
Okay.
Not the most recent.
Okay. So I think I, I had looked through those, so we've already received comments from Ms. Mooney, so do we wanna approve the, the March eighth minutes at this time? If so, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March eighth as amended.
I think everybody's saying that.
I will need to abstain, I haven't been here.
Sure. Do we have a second on the motion to approve?
Okay, to Alana?
Anybody want a second for the motion to approve the minutes?
I wasn't here.
I'm abstaining because.
Yeah, sure. Alright, with that, all that approved, say aye? Alright, with that, I guess we're down to board members, select board updates and then we'll adjourn. What's that?
You skipped the public comment.
Nobody here.
It's good you're on it Buzz.
Anybody want public comment? Nobody's speaking up, so, alright, we'll do board member updates, select board, start down on this end.
Nope.
Nothing?
All set.
Okay.
I'm all set right now, thank you, I do know that we've got a joint meeting to plan at some point with C B A.
Yes, yeah, that'll probably be one of the things we discussed as part of those action items.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna discuss any personal issues that's going on, so. We have our plans for what we're doing with the ninety thousand dollars that the town says for infrastructure redoing, that's a big thing that's coming up. Spending that money adequately on keeping up our town buildings too, which are obviously in need of repair.
These are the funds that were approved during the voting?
Right, those are big expenditures that we're talking about, or have applications out for. Highway department, we actually raised the. Our.
Minimum wage or?
Yeah, it's not minimum wage, trust me, it's way.
Our minimum, yeah.
Yeah, in order to try to induce more people, but finding a lot of our, one of the reasons why we're not finding is that we require people to get C D L B licenses. You know, in order to drive the trucks, but then that directly competes with, you know, said companies like Serrano or any of these trucking companies. Which, you know, the town off, doesn't offer, we're not part of the state for retirement packages and stuff like this. You know, we do matching four one Ks and stuff like this, but, you know, these other companies have all this retirement programs and stuff like this, so. Our pool of what we're looking for, for a candidate is really, really narrow.
Yep.
So it's becoming a lot more tough, you know, we'll see how this round of, you know, 'cause I think if you have the right credentials, we could start you off at, you know. Twenty-five to twenty-eight dollars an hour or something like this, so it's not like we're not trying to be competitive with, you know, with trade, but those trucking companies are.
They seek to beat out the.
Right, and then those guys there, all those guys, and those trucking companies do is have to drive a truck. You know, we ask our guys to do a lot more than, you know, just drive a truck, you know, for, so, it's really coming, you know, more difficult to find. You know, the right app, the, I mean, so that's a big thing to try to figure out.
We had a friend of nearby who is a younger, younger kid, who actually looked to work for the highway department here in town. And he was told he didn't qualify at all, and it's like, why are they not hiring young people to dig, you know.
Laborers, laborers.
Exactly, there's, why is there no laborer pool being sought after?
Well, because every, like, you have all the trucks, you know, I mean, that's one of our biggest concerns, because we, you have all the dump trucks and stuff like this, which you need C D L Bs, which you need to run plows. You'd be certified for that, and part of the conditions that the board, what we talked about like a year ago. Was that the applicants that we are hiring, you know, some people on the board wanted to see that the applicants must consist of having a C D L B. Or we weren't hired, well, one of the reasons for that was because they were feeling it's the town, if you hire somebody. And then we spend all the money sending them through school to get them to the, get their C D L Bs, we have a chance now that we made them a valuable commodity.
Right.
That they won't be here.
So why not hire just laborers?
Think where you're kinda getting at.
Well, labor doesn't, I mean, again, we really need the, I mean, the laborer can obviously be the same truck drivers, 'cause I mean, we don't have just a reg, I mean. We tried to hire just regular laborers even around here, you know, that could work for the town doing the. Work around this building here outside, shoveling, you know, doing stuff like this.
Non-C D L related.
Non-C D L, we couldn't get anybody at fifteen or seventeen dollars an hour that even wanted to do that, so I mean.
You're saying somebody applied and they, for fifteen or seventeen dollars an hour, and they were told no because they don't have.
Well, they didn't apply.
Correct.
Well, that's because, that, again, that's the highway, but we had another job here in town that was available for them, that was listed and that was posted.
Well, this was within the last six months or so.
But again, that's one of the criterias that we're looking for is a C D L B.
I think that's because.
Not just a, just a regular.
And this is eighteen, eighteen or nineteen.
And I'm guessing that the reason there is that the town would like, obviously we don't have a huge staff, and the goal is there that somebody could wear multiple hats and you're not shoehorned into. Say you have four people, you only have two people that can drive a dump truck.
Have you considered hiring someone and just like the police department, they, you hire them, they go off for a training, then they'll become the police department. Maybe we need to hire someone, send them off for C D L training and then.
Yeah, that's what he just finished saying, is that they get the C D L and then they go somewhere else.
How about adding in a contract clause that says you have to work for the town for X number of years?
Legally, you can do that.
You certainly can in the military. I don't know why.
Uncle Sam's a little different than that.
The more you demand people to stay, the more likely you are to hire the liars, because the honest people will tell you they don't know if they will or not. And they might very well stay, the liars want the job, they'll say, sure, I'll stay.
Right now, this is our, we are actually hoping to find with what we just did by providing more money. Is to see what we're gonna get for more applicants and see how that is actually gonna work.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's the.
So you're only looking for one person, that one person.
Now, the four percent cap has to begin, right?
You're not looking for anybody else, just the C D L person.
The four percent cap on the town budget.
It was, there was no. So that's.
Didn't change.
Well, it could be, I mean, we'd like to have them that they drive a truck.
The four percent cap on the budget, there was a, there was a, an article to repeal it. That didn't pass, right? The one on the school, they jacked it up to ten percent and that means nothing.
Are you asking, like, you're, you're getting into if somebody wanted to just be.
Nobody wants to.
Is that the town had a position for more of a.
We don't have just a general labor position available.
Well, that's all I need to know.
Right, we, we, we want the, we need the.
Yeah, I get it.
Truck driver.
The structure of the staff at the public works needs that, a person that can wear multiple hats. I see what you're saying because.
It's a multiple hat job.
Some towns, so, for example, like town of Durham actually hires like two or three people and they say, okay, there's more laborer designed projects, obviously Durham has a lot more public space.
Right, they take their trash, they house and they take care of this.
Right.
You know, we don't have track barrels out in town that are for people, we don't have, you know.
Less labor related positions with one truck they can drive, they can drive the pickup truck and that's about it.
One, one suggestion, my brother, he drives a bus, is a sign-on bonus, I don't know if you guys have talked about that.
That's true.
Different towns offer like a one-time sign-on bonus.
Yeah.
And have you checked with the town attorneys to say, and, and maybe it isn't, you work for us for like three years, but. If you leave within a year or two of getting this, then you owe X amount of money back to the town to pay for your education.
Well, we do, that, that happens with the police department now, we have people that go in, they come in, they, they work with us and use the, because, I mean, it's a nice group of guys and women that work over at the police department. That most of those people end up staying for a good period of time, but if you look over the past history, we have.
Lost people.
Quite a few that have just used us as the stepping stone, and there was nothing we could do except for, we look at the next town that took them and say, hey, why don't you write us a check? That town says.
Yeah, sit on it.
Yeah, right, we're not gonna see shit, thanks Nottingham.
What about, what about staggering out a bonus? So you get a bonus, but you only get this amount.
I was just gonna say, some people do.
This amount for six months until, until you reach a year, at least you get them for a year.
Well, then when we sat on the budget committee and we had the comprehensive part where we paid on merits and stuff like this, which we ended up cutting a lot of it. Because we weren't paying it, that plan would work, but now since we've cut a bunch of that out. Well, we gotta go back and try to add that back in if we're gonna start doing that for every, 'cause you can't do it for one, you're gonna do it for every department.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be, I mean, if you're gonna start offering.
Doesn't sound like it's easy no matter what we try.
It's.
And I don't think we're the only town that's dealing with this.
No, not at all, every town is basically, again, that's.
Yeah, and businesses even.
I.
We can't find our laborers for the company that I, we're a manufacturing company and we can't find people to do the simple labor and we pay really good.
I will say people coming out.
And we're in Nashville, New Hampshire, we're in a populated area, this is rural Nottingham, I mean, this makes it even.
Harder.
Harder, so.
Yeah.
But it's something else we'll get through, you know, it's.
And I assume, I think you said in the beginning that are you back with us, did you guys reset some timelines?
I'm back on, Ben Barlow's the chair, we welcome Tim and Mr. Walsh and as the two new members.
Yep.
And then I'm sure there'll be more updates.
Cool.
As that progresses, as we get them in line, both being brand new members to the board.
Sure. Nothing really for me, I'll give everybody a heads up, you might have seen the email from Alana that there's an application on May tenth, be prepared to review that. On group four, I will have to recuse myself because I'm a direct abutter to the property, so I've already confirmed with Ed that, I believe that's May tenth is the first scheduled hearing for that. To accept the application, we haven't even, we haven't seen the materials yet, but Ed will be obviously back for that and sharing it, but I'll be joining the, the crowd for that application, so. I'll have a short walk for the sidewalk whenever that occurs. Um, nothing else though from me tonight. Good?
Yeah. And we got S R P C, so we had a commissioner meeting last week. And we put forth, flew the New Hampshire D O T ten-year plan. Of projects in, we actually had, there was actually thirteen million dollars worth of projects proposed in Stratford Regional, but we only had like five million that we could send off to D O T. So we actually had to vote on them, so it's gonna be several projects in Summersforth that are gonna be put on, but then for us. At least that impacts us, one twenty-five in Lee, where you turn to kinda go to Lee downtown. That has been put on the project to work on, addressing the.
George's Mills Road?
Yes, yeah, yeah, addressing that, so that's good news.
It's terrible.
It is, that's why it got highly ranked.
Nice. I'm glad I don't have to, I have the easy directions every time I go through there.
Then heard from the folks in Durham that I guess Epping's sewer treatment plant is not working up to speed. And that they are dumping wastewater into the Lamprey River, which is affecting Durham's drinking water.
Wow.
And the E P A is on it, the D E S is on it.
Shit's about here.
Yeah, great, wow.
Yeah.
And there is more, I, I, I don't know how to find it, there is a lot more information, they're basi, they're basically under enforcement action by the E P A.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's been going on. And then.
Good question.
I don't know if you folks get New Hampshire Business Magazine, but I got it, it was a really interesting article on Epping, and I'll just give you. The amount of development that's going on in Epping. There's a total of six hundred and twenty-one housing units that are gonna be coming online in Epping's not too far away. Then, you know, at the intersection of one twenty-five and twenty-seven across from the Shell Station, well, the landowner there is looking to, hopes to attract a hotel, restaurant and bank.
Oh, talk to that, no?
Yep. And then I think you had asked a while back, what's going on with that clearing?
Yeah.
So that, close to Nottingham, that is going to be a commercial landscape business. And then the developer that.
Not too pretty yet.
And then the developer that still owns land behind Wal-Mart still wants to eventually build that, so. The title of the.
Epping is becoming like Newington.
The title of the article is. So Epping considers itself, Epping is the center of the universe.
He just said that.
There's a sign for it?
At the town office.
We've been joking about that for twenty years.
Joking enough that they bought themselves a sign.
So and then also in the, so that, that article is in the Business New Hampshire Magazine. Also, in, in the projects that were, one of the projects that Durham put forth for the D O T was. A, another turn, turnabout down at the intersection of Mass Road and it's the road that go, Main Street that goes into Main Street, so when you get off of Route four and you're heading towards. Main Street, they wanted another turnaround kind of right where the horse stalls are and the greenhouses and stuff right before.
Oh, where one fifty-one comes down?
The one before, the one that's already there.
Yeah.
Um, because all of that kind of land that sits kind of behind where the, I think it's. I think it's D O T, but it might be.
U S D A.
Fisher's, U S D A office, so that's all land that is, has, that's in the, if you look at the. The two thousand and twelve master plan for U N H, that's kind of carved out as like public-private land that eventually they wanna develop.
Well, the West Edge Housing, West Edge Housing went in years ago.
So where West Edge went in and, and the, the thinking is a hotel kind of multi-use building that will go in there at some point in time. So Durham was putting that for a project kind of thinking.
They wanted to slow traffic down too, 'cause. People, no, no, this is on.
It would be off of Route four.
It's like Main Street and where one fifty-one comes down. You know where the big U N H sign is when you come in? There's that little intersection right before, like the speed drops to like twenty-five at that intersection and go into Durham, that intersection.
My, my question to that one was, like, 'cause there's a lot of stuff going on, you know, in Durham. Is why aren't those being voted as racial impact, because Durham, when Durham runs, when Lamprey goes low.
U N H runs their wells.
They, yeah, but they open up Pataque.
To release, yeah.
To, they, so they release water and Pataque away, so I don't, I don't know why Durham doesn't, but I mean, part of me is thinking, maybe we like write a nice little letter to.
Yeah.
'Cause I mean, that impacts Pataque away.
Yeah, it's an interesting concept too that they, it sounds like private development can pay for that roundabout if they wanna build a hotel. Durham's been trying to get a hotel for decades, that little, that little Hampton or Holiday Inn isn't serving them enough.
They had a hotel.
They did, yeah.
University had a hotel.
Yeah.
And said.
Triples.
And said, no, you know, it's gonna cost too much to, I'd say it's a.
They want a downtown hotel for the old A T O property.
So are you saying that Pataque way, they, they take the water from Pataque way to, for their drinking water?
When Lamprey goes down, so Durham gets their water from Lamprey. And so when Lamprey goes down, like in drought, so they have done it, it was not too long ago, right?
What they do is it's actually called a pulse, and what they're doing is, in Newmarket, when the measurable amount of cubic feet of water that's flowing is not to the standard they are. And then that standard lasts more than a three-day period. You know, because of lack of rain, lack of anything, or it might be, maybe a little longer, but they'll pulse the lake, and by pulsing the lake, they could take two to three inches of water. Which is an eight hundred square foot, I mean, eight hundred acre lake, so you take three, that's a lot of water, but remember, they also take it from Mendez Pond over there too. 'Cause that's a state-run dam and stuff like this, so they also pulse that one, but that lake's only three hundred something acres, so it's, you know, half the size of Pataque. But those are two pulse sites in order to feed into the Lamprey, and the biggest watershed from the Lamprey River is Pataque and Mendez Pond.
It wasn't too long ago, right, it was like three or five years ago.
Last couple of years.
No, they've been doing, it's been happening more often, and then they actually stopped, they, wintertime, they, they were trying to reduce the amount of water they take out. Where they used to lower it like seven feet every year, and now they're down to four and a half, and they, and they, 'cause, and then they're trying to hold it because. They're afraid in the late fall, we could be in a drought session, so they wanna make sure they have time to pulse or if they need to pulse over the winter.
And this, this water's going right to Durham?
Well, it's going right to the Lamprey River, so.
Most of the great, most of it's going to go to the Great Bay.
Right, kind of the North River, the lake pumps out of, or if, depending if they do doll up, that ever goes over into Epping, and comes out at the junction of twenty-seven.
But it's for drinking water when their water is low.
Yeah, it's part of the state, the state water management program.
I mean, obviously it goes through filters and stuff through Durham.
Yeah, legally, they can't pull.
Pataqueway is already low, really low right now.
Yeah, we don't have, we're still, we're way, we're, if you looked at the seasonal charts, which the state has on the heights of the dam, which I haven't looked, so I'm not going to say, but I'm sure from my knowledge of the years living there, that the water table today, from where it would have been normally over the past couple of years, we're, we're down, like, I can't put my boat in the water, because we're literally probably eighteen inches down.
Interesting, I feel like we haven't.
From where we should, where normally, you know, it's my wife's birthday tomorrow, and we're usually in the boat on April twenty-seventh, and I'm not going to probably get it until May fifth if we don't get more rain.
Wow, I know, when we were kayaking last year, we were watching.
So I mean, it's come up a lot from Saturday, but it's still not the.
Right, yeah, it's not.
But.
I mean, that's, that's a mild winter.
My daughter and my kids down in Pataqueway last week, and the, out the restaurants are not open yet, and I asked why, and they said the water was not.
Right.
It was down.
Yeah, the, that's what mild winter will do, you get too much runoff, so it was running through Pataqueway while the dam was pulled.
Sure.
And then not the slow melt release that you hope for.
Well, they do that also because they're afraid of the docks and stuff getting damaged, so they want to wait for the, with the boards and ice out, but we still had ice on the lake, and then we got the warm spell, which is not the snow, but since there was still ice, you don't want to raise the water level, because it might, it's.
It was a bad combination of weather scenarios this year, but, no, Epping is definitely, I mean, if you follow Epping, it's, I mean, I've, I've done plenty of work in Epping, it's, it's interesting that the sewer and water is an ongoing problem, that they, it's actually an issue where people have been approved for sewer connection permits. I, I have, I have, I'm running into this issue, you've been, you'll have an approval for septic flow based on your project, but then they call you and say, we actually can't take it because of this EPA action that's going on, so. I don't know if you've ever seen them, Epping uses like grit separators and lagoons, it's not the prettiest treatment system, it doesn't mean, you can't do it these days.
Right.
Yeah, right.
And they're going to put six hundred and forty-one more.
So part of the issue is they're approving these, but there's a lot of these developments, if they go to pay the building permit, they're going to get told by the town, sorry, we can't issue building permits right now, there's going to be approvals for a lot of these, you can't actually build it. And the, the piece behind Walmart and Lowe's, I can say this because it's public notice, but they're, it's hopefully going to become a particular electrical union training facility, a relocation of that, so.
A what?
Yeah.
A, a training facility, a trade, a trades training facility.
Like a school, like a boat school?
Yeah, like a trade school.
Okay.
So it's actually a great use.
On Route Four right now, that they used to climb the poles and electrical, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so. On Route Four, if you drive, if you go right over the Nottingham line, you see all the telephone poles and the guy, right, well.
Mm-hmm, I know, exactly, yeah, over by party.
It's an old, so there's, I don't know if that's the thing, because I don't know, but I'm sure that there's probably something like that.
It's, they're, they've been the applicant on stuff, they've been at the meetings, so, yeah, so there's, there's some good developments going in, some low-impact, I guess you'd call it, development.
Yeah, that's fairly low-impact.
Good education opportunities, they need space to grow, so, there's some good, but there is a lot of housing approved in Epping right now, so. Yeah, Route one twenty-five is not going to get any quieter, I think.
I don't know if it's going to manage that traffic.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, the more traffic that goes on that, the more it goes on our back roads to get there.
Especially in the summer.
Or just people traveling over there, because they want to go, they want to go to Newington, they want to go to Epping.
Exactly.
They're coming through Nottingham in order to get to Epping.
Yep.
Yeah, one fifty-two's gotten busier.
Time to put a toll on it. Pay for, you know, pay for.
We're looking to toll this for us.
Well, you know what, you want to, it's fucking terrible.
We don't know if we can put tolls.
We're solving all the problems of the world, it's time to go home.
Yeah, they can't help it. They're on one fifty-two here, right after the school, that bridge has to be redone.
Oh yeah, when is that?
So that could be a three-year project, because they don't want to send everybody around Priest Row or whatever on the backside, so they're going to have to tear off, build, you know, one half of it, and then stop, so it's going to be actually a light slowing up all the traffic, so it could be.
It's two thousand and twenty-four. They start two years ahead of time getting it through.
Could be a friggin' long.
Yeah, that was the one that Chief, Chief Woodman spoke out, that in the fire department too, it caused response issues.
Right.
The state was hoping, because if they just closed the road, it was like a nine-month project or something.
No, not even.
A six-month or nine-month, it was pretty short.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do expedited bridge construction.
But, no, so it could be a two-year project, so.
All right, well, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn, I doubt I'm going to have any nays.
I moved second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, because, I think we got a lot of information out there tonight.